But agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act notices notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Mr. Book?
Here.
Ms. Fritsch?
Here.
Mr. Hurley?
Here.
Ms. Camello?
Here.
Ms. Russell?
Here.
Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Costanzo?
Here.
Mr. Najarian?
Present.
I put it away so I didn't. I put it away so I didn't touch it. What can I tell you?
I don't know. He wanted to disrupt my meeting. All right, so we got approvals for resolution?
Yes. First is Resolution 2021-43, Zupa Block 703, Lot 65.01, Sunset Drive, approving the extension to file minor subdivision map approved by Resolution 2013-53, dated September 8, 2013. Eligible are Mr. Book, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Camello, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Najarian.
Okay, I need a motion and a second on this resolution.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please Danielle.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Najarian?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-44, Carpenter Block 101, Lot 7, 14 Berwin Lane, granting approval of variance to construct a detached storage structure. Eligible are Mr. Book, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Najarian.
Okay, I need a motion?
Move to approve.
And a second. A motion and a second. Danielle, roll the ball.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-45, DeLuca Block 10101, Lot 74, 54 Mill Pond Road, granting approval of variances to install an accessory use natural gas generator. Eligible are Mr. Book, Ms. Fritsch, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Najarian.
A motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
Resolution 2021-46, Angelis Block 8301, Lot 1, 81 North County Line Road, granting approval of variances to construct a detached storage structure. Eligible are Mr. Book, Ms. Fritsch, Mr. Hurley, Ms. Bradley, Mr. Costanzo, Mr. Najarian.
I need a motion?
Move to approve.
And a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch? Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes.
That concludes the resolutions for this evening.
And tonight there's not going to be any minutes, so we're going to move on to payment of the vouchers. Okay, we have two vouchers, one from Danielle for 150 and one from King Recording for 250. I need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve and pay the vouchers.
Second.
We got a motion and a second on vouchers. Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes. So we got no announcements, no executive session, matters of discussion?
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, I believe we do have at least one announcement and we could probably have two. First, application number four, Blahos 643 Herman Road. That matter has been asked and has been carried to the December 15, 2021 meeting without the need of further notice.
And number five.
In addition, Miles 2 LLC has also asked to be carried and Mr. Paporo, I apologize as I was driving. Do we now have a date for that one yet?
December 1st.
Okay, so it is. So, application number five, Milos 2 LLC, preliminary final site plan with use variance 3360. That matter has been carried to the December 1st, 2021 meeting without the need for further notice.
Excellent. Okay, so why don't we just swear in the professionals at this juncture?
Thank you all for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Sorry, we're Mr. Hill.
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Frank Miskovich, Board Traffic Engineer.
Jeffrey Paporo, Zoning Officer.
Great. Okay, we're ready for the first. Kate and Danielle, come on up. The variance for a six-foot fence in a front yard set back.
Each of you, thank you for raising your right hand. Do each of you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can each of you give us your, somebody can give us your full name, spell your last and your address, please. And, but when you're speaking after, I, we apologize because it's getting picked up also, it's live stream. You have to speak into the mic, please.
My name is Daniel Epperaly. Last name spelled E-P-P-E-R-L-Y. I live at 43 Pennsylvania Avenue in Jackson, New Jersey.
I'm Katie Epperaly, again, 43 Pennsylvania.
Thank you. To the chair.
Tell us what you're planning to do.
So we would like to put a six-foot fence around our property.
Just bring that microphone a little bit closer. Bring it to you. Yeah, there you go.
There you go. We would like to put a six-foot fence around our property, a six-foot wood stockade fence. Our property is on a corner lot, so most of our yard seems to go out to the side rather than to the back. So we're very visible to our neighbors. We just put in a pool. So we would like to move our fence from a four-foot picket fence to make it better and safer for our pools. We wanted to put in a six-foot one.
Okay, so that's your hardship. You have a pool and that you want protection and you're going to take down the four-foot fence.
Correct.
You want to replace it with a six-foot fence?
Correct.
Okay. Any questions from the board members on this?
I would just defer to our engineer if there's any site, site restrictions that are impinged.
The existing fence is not located within any site, within any site line, I'm sorry, line of sites at the intersection. In addition, the lot behind this one on Rhode Island Drive, the driveway is approx, the driveway for that home is approximately 80 feet away from the fence. So there would be no line of sight issue with the neighbor trying to exit their driveway as well.
Do you see no issues here? Okay. Anybody else on the board want to ask a question? Nothing else going forward? All right. Public, anybody in the public here to come up forward, speak on this? Not seeing anybody coming forward. I'm a closed public session on this. All right, board members, it's left to us. Do you want to make a motion and a second?
I'd like to put forth a motion to erect a six-foot wooden fence as designated in the site plan provided to the board for the application.
Okay, now I need a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes, enjoy your fence.
Thank you so much.
Okay, the next application we have is Edward and Jenny. Come on up.
Nitreuter, I believe, is that?
Mitreuter, yes, sir.
Nitreuter, okay. Mr. and Mrs. Mitreuter, if you kindly raise your right hands. Do each of you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can each of you, first, again, I apologize, we're focused on speaking into the mic. Give us your full name, spell your last, your address, please.
Edward Mitreuter, M-I-T-R-E-U-T-E-R, 2 Topaz Drive, Jackson.
Janine Mitreuter, M-I-T-R-U-T-E-R, 2 Topaz Drive, Jackson.
Okay. Edward, why don't you tell the board exactly what you're planning?
We're planning to put an addition on to the, the exist, yeah, on, on our house.
Relax, take it easy.
For my in-laws to move in. It would be on the Sapphire Drive side of the house.
And just speak a little bit closer to the microphone.
Sorry. Putting a, an addition on to our existing house for my in-laws to move into. This would be on the Sapphire Drive side of the house, wrapping around to the back.
Any issues? Mr. Hill?
The applicant's proposing the addition within what's considered the front yard of the house since it's a corner lot along Topaz and Sapphire. The addition will extend 24 feet from the side of the house towards Sapphire Drive, which will result in 12 feet from the property line. There is a site triangle easement in the corner, at the corner, however, the addition is outside of that and the addition is also outside of the shade tree and utility easement as well. We received architectural plans from the applicant's architect, I believe, and the addition consists of a, two bedrooms, two closets, a bathroom, a full bathroom, and a seating area with den. And I should note that this, this home is on a septic system. When you, when you add bedrooms, the septic system has to be expanded accordingly to meet today's current standards.
Understand.
Okay, so you're aware of that. And any, 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 if the board were to act favorably on this, our resolution compliance would not be granted for this application until such time as a valid Health Department approval is in place for that septic system.
You understand that?
Yes, sir.
Goodness, Mr. Hill, thank you.
May I add one thing, Mr. Hill, just to clarify this, maybe of import for the board, there's no kitchen proposed, correct?
Based on the floor plan for the addition, there is no kitchen, correct?
And no basement?
No.
No basement. Access, access is, access based on the architectural plan is completely interior to the home, no new ex, new.
No external access.
No new external access.
That's correct.
Any other questions from board members?
If I may through the chair, do you know the existing square footage of your home presently?
Approximately 3,400.
How, how many square feet is the addition?
About 1,000.
To that point, board, they're still within the allowable lot, maximum lot coverage and, and impervious coverage service. They're within, they're below the limits.
And again, they meet all septic requirements, there's no, uh?
They're going to have to update their septic system because they're adding bedrooms, yes.
So, just in terms of hardship questions, can you articulate why you chose that particular location versus what appears at least to be if you had simply put that same 1,000 square feet directly in the back, I don't think that would have triggered a variant. You have to speak into the mic.
I'm sorry. So on that, on that back corner, just, I guess, to, to the backside of the, the, the back, that's where our well is. So if we were to extend back, we would be up into that well area. So we're, and we also have the pool in the back, in the backyard as well, so.
So this is not up, this is an old, so let's talk about, I know this is something that sometimes provides some difficulty for the board. I'm looking at what's also, we'll mark it A1 as well. Who produced the original survey?
The original survey, hold on, I'm pulling that out here. That, John Polanska?
Was that certified to you when you purchased?
Yeah, that was the builder's architect that was also, I guess, submitted in all of plant, to the town as well. They have all that.
Well, the issue is, is like you just said, okay, the wellhead is showing, but the pool's not. So what else is in the back that's not part of what we see?
Yeah, just, just the pool is on there. Uh, that's not on there. But we, I mean, we had a variance and we applied for the building permits on all that. That's already been approved through the town many years ago.
Is the pool, is it an in-ground pool?
In-ground pool, yes, sir.
What type of concrete surface surrounds the pool? How far out does the, is there a pad that surrounds the pool and how large is that? How large is the patio? Is the patio just off the back of the house?
It's off the back of the house. There's steps going down and then it's around the pool.
And how large is the pool?
20 by 45.
Has concrete all the way around?
Pavers.
Pavers? And how, how far out from the pool do the pavers extend?
Depending on the area, it's kind of a, like.
A wandering?
Yes, sir.
Walkway?
So.
So at the max?
At the widest would be like 15 feet off the side of the pool.
I'm sorry?
15 feet.
No, I'm talking around the pool itself. How far out do the pavers, as they go around the pool?
At, at the widest section would be about 15 feet off the edge of the pool.
I have a follow-up question pertaining to the pool. If this application gets approved, how far would the pool be from the addition?
So, at least, at least 20 feet from the addition.
Thank you. Just.
Yes, ma'am, no basement.
No crawl space? No, as far as you know.
How many bedrooms are you?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms?
Yes, sir.
Any other issues?
Yeah, through the chair. It, it's a site plan issue here. I mean, we're, we're dealing with an outdated plan, which doesn't properly show the pool.
The zoning officer's already raised a question. I was going to ask about the distance from the pool to the new extension. That's verbal. Situations like this in the past, you know, I, I think the board has looked to have a more up-to-date site plan. I don't know if it's warranted in this instance, but I think it's something we should discuss.
So if I could, if I could just point out on the drawing that you have up there where that well exists, if you can see that?
Yes.
That is in front of where my pool presently resides. That's.
When you say front?
Forward towards the house.
The pool is.
The pool is behind that well and to the neighbor's side.
So why would, that's what I, I guess the question then is, if you superimpose, if you superimposed your addition to go directly off your back?
It's going to go right into the.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might, the survey's 15 years old. It's an original survey. Surveyor has nothing to do with this. The architect took the 15-year-old survey and put it on their plans and called it a plot plan. Okay? If the board wants an updated survey so they can see the pool, you can either ask for it now or they're going to have to do it when they finish the building addition. So to the extent that Jeff elicited testimony and had said they're more than a certain distance from the house because otherwise they may need another variance for the distance between the new addition and the existing pool. But given that the applicant has indicated, as you look at the plan, that the pool is to the left and above the existing well location, it would seem that that would be okay because septic and well regulations indicate how far the addition has to be from the well. So that, having the separation distance between the pool and the house in this case isn't critical. It's the distance between the well and the house. But please don't be confused that a surveyor did something wrong. The surveyor did a survey 15 years ago. It's being reused for this application.
No, I don't respectfully, I don't think the board says that. The board is trying to.
You keep asking why, why the pool isn't on here. Because they're using a 15-year-old survey.
Yes, that's true. But I think the board understands that.
And I, I. Yes, I will.
I agree with Mr. Costanzo. I find it very difficult when we're looking at, at plans like this and, and I get it where you're, you're trying to paint for us a mental picture as to where all these lines are going to be drawn and what their locations are and what their proximity is. And I have, I have, I have difficulty across the board doing that. It seems to me, and Mr. Peters just hammered a nail home, is that you're going to have to do this anyway, sooner or later. I just assume have the, have the, the plan drawn properly now so that we can see the actual dimensions and it'll eliminate a lot of these potential concerns. So Mr. Costanzo, I'm on board in terms of having that site planned.
Or, or maybe not so much a site plan, but there's another term, or the architect can draw something up that will be.
Yeah, I don't.
It would be, it would be.
It would be a, a, a plan showing the addition on a current survey. That, that's what you're, that's what you're asking for.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Hill, may I also ask, should they show, or is there a way to show the distance that would be, their argument, one of their arguments for, for hardship is that any design, my words, not yours, 100%, I get. Any design for that addition would run them afoul of the regulation between distances between the well and the house.
So, the, once you have a current survey depicting the existing conditions, you would take that survey, you would, you would draw on there to scale the addition. That way, the addition can be dimensioned accurately between property lines and existing features. That's, that's really what you're look, that's what you're looking for.
Okay, so you understand according to our professionals, both the planners and the engineer.
Okay, so. So if, the issue here is the survey's 15 years old that you used and you sketched everything on here to the best of your ability. However, because your lot has changed since this date, there are other features on your lot that the board wants to make sure that, first of all, there's no, that there's, that there's generally a hardship that this is the only place you can put this addition. Okay, that's first and foremost. That's the most important thing. But second of all, you're going to have, once you have a current survey showing what you currently have out there, you can then go ahead and have your architect draw this up to scale, dimension it from the property lines and so on accurately. You would need to hire, you would need to hire a survey, a land survey. All right, you could probably start with Mr. Plaskonka who did the original one. He's still, he's still around. Uh, but there's others as well. Correct, you would, you would gather all that paper, you would gather all that, submit it back to Jeff. You already have an application pending. There, the board's asking you to supplement that application. No.
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 Well, provided we announce a date tonight, then we, no more notices required, correct?
Correct. So, which, what's the January date?
I would say the soonest that the holidays is probably going to be January before you can get back in front of here. Yeah, because you have to get the survey done.
So he travels and to get him here was hard. Can I come on my own or do the both of us need to be?
You don't both, you do not have to both be here. Each of you have an interest. Each of you have an interest in the application.
The meeting in January is January 19th.
All right, so. Well, they were relying on professionals to say yes. If it's not, they can always come back. It can extend it again. So.
So it's, it's feasible to have all that done and in the board's hands for the January 19th meeting. It can be done. However, it's, oh, it's obviously subject to whoever's land surveyor they choose and their schedule. So I think the January date's a good date to put on there and if it's not completed by then, they would just have to be asked to be carried again.
So.
Do you both understand exactly what's needed?
Contact the surveyor, have them give us some survey and.
As soon as possible.
Yes.
This way we can get in in January.
And you also need to have the architect.
Right.
To scale.
On the new.
So that you know what, yeah, we need to, that, we need that detail. So we can help you. All the men are laughing. And the women too, that, because you understand better than us. That's exactly right. All right, ladies, ladies and gentlemen, application number two. Variance number 3390, block 1002, lot 14. That matter is being carried to the January 19, 2022 meeting without the requirement of further notice. The applicant has waived time until January 31, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next application. Facility 2 LLC. Variance 3355.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Members of the Board, Salvatore Alfieri on behalf of the applicant. Tonight, Ron Gazarovski is present. He'll introduce himself, but he's been retained by an objector.
Yes, good evening. Chairman, Members of the Board. I appear this evening as an attorney for an objector. The name of an objector is Clayton Sand Company. They are only use a property within Detention, Jackson, block 19001, lots 11.02 and 12, block 19101, lots 1367 and 4, and block 23301, lots 1, 2, and 3. Being owners of property within the community, they are legitimate interested parties in this matter.
Why did your client wait so long to come forward?
Sorry.
The que, the question to the chairs, this is your first appearance and you're aware that there are really, there are two witnesses left, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of those. Been several hearings. I spoke to my colleague, Mr. Alfieri. He is calling two witnesses this evening, the planner and the noise man, and I intend to cross-examine them. I don't have a need to cross-examine any of the other witnesses.
Fantastic. Okay, we're on board.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Proceed.
Thank you. And, and the only other thing is to clarify, from what we're told from our professionals, the Clayton site is approximately six miles from this site, give or take. We don't object in any way to the fact that they have the right as a, as a property owner to appear, but you, you're just going to keep in mind that you may want to weigh their objection in relation to how this project actually impacts them.
And I'm sure Mr. Gordon, as, who will, we presume be qualified as an expert, will be able to testify to that representation.
Yes. And we, again, tonight, as Mr. Gazarovski indicated, we only have two witnesses that we're going to present in direct testimony. That's our sound, our acoustic expert. Our acoustic expert is different from the one that testified at the last hearing. The last hearing, we had Norm Dotty, but he was unable to do the, the testing that, that we wanted to present to you tonight with, with the bikes that were present and some of the board members that were there. So we had to get somebody else who could actually perform the testing and issue the report in sufficient time to appear tonight. So we had to hire a new expert and then Ian Borden's our planner. We do have Nick Janusa here in case one of the board members have a specific question as a result. We're not offering him as a witness because we don't want cross-examination to take all night on testimony that took place already and where you were able to cross-examine them. And we have Carol Janusa, Andrew Janusa, her husband, who testified the last time had a, a serious stroke. He's not able to attend, obviously, but we're, you know, the family's here and they're prepared to answer questions if you have them.
So, Mr. Alfieri, and I'm asking this as a question, but it's more of a suggestion. As you're aware, various board members, and I think even the board engineer, did make some site visits. I think that my inclination is to have those reports placed on the record prior to you.
Agreed.
Just so if your experts hear anything. Just so if your experts hear anything. Yes, sir.
Was Mr. Dotty cross-examined by the board at the last hearing?
Yeah, his testimony was completed.
Was completed.
And the board suggested they wanted additional studies, which is what we're doing tonight.
Was any earlier studies of Mr. Dotty introduced into evidence?
His, I think his first report must have been. I, I don't remember offhand.
Okay.
So, Mr. Hill, why don't you start off the lead in this because you were there at the location?
Okay. Yeah, so the applicant had arranged for myself and three other board members to attend a site meeting on a Saturday morning. I was looking to see what date that was and exactly, I do not have it in my schedule though. Do the board members remember?
16th, October 16th.
October 16th?
Don't quote me on that.
So, it was a Saturday morning in October, if that helps. And it was myself and three other board members. It was the 16th. Thank you. We, we showed up on site around nine o'clock, 9:30 in the morning. And at that point in time, we were asked to, we were told that they had 15 ATVs available to ride throughout the, the three areas of the site. Consistent with their testimony, they had five ATVs within the professional track area. They had five ATVs within the junior track area. And they have five ATVs within, running around the perimeter trails as well. So, for a total of 15. And that, that occurred between the time period, I want to say between 9:30 and 11:30 in the morning. It was, it was a, it was a, it was a sunny day. It was, it was, there was a breeze. However, it was not, it was not overcast. During the two hours, we were on...
Mr. Chairman, may I raise one question? Was the public given notice of this meeting out at the site? Was it put in the newspapers, or how was it noticed?
Well, it wasn't a public meeting.
It was not a public meeting. The majority of the board did not show up.
I'm sorry?
The majority of the board was not there at any given time.
Yeah, but there's still a meeting which was conducted.
A meeting was not conducted.
There was, it was testimony giving this evening based upon that. My only question is, was notice given to interested parties?
No, so the answer is no. The answer to that is no.
Okay. So, between the, again, between the period of around 9:30 to 11:30, they had 15 ATV vehicles constantly being driven throughout the site. Two of the board members, for a portion of that time, were most interested in and evaluated what potential noise could be heard at, at two off-site homes. I'll let them speak to their observations when I'm, when I'm complete. The other board member accompanied myself and a representative from the facility too. And we, we drove around the development, I'm sorry, drove around the property. And we spent most of our time right in the middle, right in the middle where the professional track is, at one of the observation, observation points. And so, we were surrounded by 15 vehicles the whole time. I could tell you what my, if, if the board wants to know what my personal observations were as far as noise, I can give you...
Please respond.
So, while we were, while we were in the center of the site with all 15 ATVs traveling, the three of us were able to have a normal conversation. With the exception of whenever, whenever an ATV, it was actually Mr. Janusa, was, I'm going to call it showing off in front of us. But this was where there was a large jump. So, he was literally about 20 feet away from us. But when Mr. Janusa was not within that, that distance of us, it was, we, while we heard ATVs throughout the property, we could all hold and have a normal conversation without elevating our voices. That was in the center of it. When we, when the demonstration was done, the, the board members and I were in the parking lot area next to the house. And at, during that time, there were still 15 ATVs traveling around. And at that time, we were still able to hold a normal conversation. What struck me was when we were in the parking area and closer to the house, what we tended to hear more, what we heard was traffic along the road passing us and nothing interior of the site. So, those were my observations. I can certainly let the board members go from there with their observations.
Approximately, how far were you from the house?
So, all of my observations are based on me being on site at various points of the site. So, I'm internal of the site. The closest I was to a property line would have been Hawking Road where the house is, when we spent probably 15 minutes, just 15 minutes there before we, before we left for the day.
Okay, thank you. Who's next? Who would like to speak on this?
So, I was the board member that went with Evan into the site while the other two board members were outside in the neighborhood, listening for any noise. So, I was in contact with the other two board members through text message to let them know, hey, they're starting up, and all 15 were going. So, when I first got to the property, Jeff was right, we stood at the front, we waited, we patrolled, we went around the whole outside to get, you know, the, the view of the whole property to see kind of what it looked like, because I had not been to the property previously. Looking at it on paper does not reflect at all what, what I had initially thought about the property. There are tons of trees. There are, from my observation, I feel like there was a very good buffer from where the actual pits were to the outside of the property line. But Evan's right, we, we got driven into the middle of the pit. We were observing all these ATVs around us and very close to us. And we were just having a normal conversation with no elevation of voice at all. And I, and I mimic what he says about when we actually left. And standing in the front, we were actually listening to the cars go by, which were much louder at that point than when we were actually in the middle of the pit with all the ATVs around us. You're welcome.
Who'd like to go next? All right, Ken.
To this facility. Sorry.
That was not me.
So, because I had a lot of concern for the neighbors who testified. They were very passionate about their quality of life. And I wanted to really take the time to make sure that they were, you know, getting their day. So, on this day in October, I did walk a property on Leanne Drive. Michelle, the property owner happened to be outside. They had given us permission prior, but he walked the property with us. He was doing his lawn. He had his own equipment out. And we could hear, but it was so faint in comparison to the traffic going by on the, on Hawking Road. After that, a few minutes, we went to Hickory Lane. We got out, and to be honest with you, Tony Anne had sent us a text that they were starting. We waited, we sent her a text, are they do, you know, are they going? She said all 15 are going. Personally, I could not hear a thing from Hickory Lane. So, you know, that's really, and then we went back to the facility. We met up with the, with Tony Anne, and we all went into the pit. And we could talk, just like, you know, they said, we were having a normal conversation. The traffic from Hawking was louder standing there than the 15, you know, vehicles going. So, you know...
Thank you for your participation. Michelle?
Going along similar to what everybody else said. I also did a visit where I went into the pit and was surprised how low of a noise level there actually was. We visited the two different streets to listen to the noise levels there based on neighbors' complaints. And to be honest, we really didn't hear much at all. In fact, the lawn equipment that was being used by someone's residence at that time was louder than anything we heard throughout the whole time. The traffic, again, while we were by the house, was actually louder. Motorcycles going up and down Hawking Road was substantially louder than anything we heard. Just normal conversation while they were riding was easy. We didn't even have to strain to listen or talk. So, I have to say, in my opinion, the noise levels were very, very minimal.
Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're going to ask that Benjamin Mueller?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I have some questions of the initial witness, if I may.
Yes, you can. Certainly ask questions of Mr. Hill, yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I take it you were present at that meeting or demonstration, representative of the board to give them guidance, correct?
No, I was there to witness and, I was there to witness the demonstration and report back to the board.
Okay. Now, when you were witnessing the demonstration, were you yourself also operating a noise meter?
No.
Okay. One, just two quick questions. If in fact, and you're aware of the fact, are you not, that the proposed use is not a permitted use in this zone, correct?
Correct.
And the applicants before the board were a use variance.
Correct.
And with regard to noise, to a certain extent, it's really irrelevant. If in fact, he needs a use variance and he's fully compliant with the noise standards, he still would need a use variance, which is separate and apart from whatever noise the machines might make.
So, I'm, since you're questioning our professional, I'm going to object to the form of a question. It's, it's asking for a legal conclusion. Can you rephrase the question, please?
Yes. Does the applicant, in this particular application, need a use variance?
Yes.
If in fact, he needs a use variance, does the fact of whether or not he is compliant with a noise ordinance, is that relevant to the issue of the use?
What's his qualification, Mr.?
Pardon?
What's the engineer's qualification to answer that question?
Well, the engineer was there to witness, as I observe, as I understand, or to observe this, this test being conducted.
No, I was not, over here, over here. I was not witness to a sound or a noise test. I was on site, listening as a witness, so I could report back to the board my observations of what I heard. I'm not a tech, I'm not a sound expert. The noise study was specifically asked for by the board to support the use variance.
To support the use variance? That, that's what you believe you were, you were there for?
No, I was there as a witness. I was there for my observations.
Thank you. I know for the question.
Sorry. I apologize. I wasn't paying attention. Do you solemnly swear or affirm, sir, that you're, that the testimony you're about to give before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your address and affiliation, please? And then through the chairman and Mr. Alfieri? Sorry. He's trying to help. Mr. Alfieri, you're probably going to have to, it's all right. You're going to have to, you're going to have to voir dire him a little bit for his expertise because it's not a normal expert that we hear. So, go ahead.
Tell me about your credentials.
Well, no, yes, Benjamin Mueller, last name M U E L L E R. I, I'm a principal at Ostergard Acoustical Associates. And the address is 1460 Route 9 North in Woodbridge, New Jersey.
All right, so you're here as a purportedly, at least at this point, as a sound expert. So, Mr. Alfieri is going to ask you a series of questions, laying your credentials on, on the record, because we don't hear many, excuse the pun, sound, sound experts.
Sure, I could just run through my credentials if you want. So, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current. My background is a, I have a bachelor's in mechanical engineering from Villeneuve University. And I have a, a master's in mechanical engineering with a concentration in noise and vibration control from Stevens Institute. I've been practicing in the field of acoustics for about 20 years now. And my testimony's been accepted across New Jersey and many municipalities.
Let me ask one other question to the chairman. What is that, can you go back to, not the 20 years of being in sound, but you talked about you have...
The, the master's. Concentration in, in noise and vibration control?
And what does that mean?
Well, really, it was just a specialized track during my master's program. I, I am a mechanical engineer by, by discipline and by education. But we were able to select specific courses that specified in noise control and vibration control during my master's courses.
We accept you.
Before that happens, Mr. Gazarovski, do you consent, or do you have any question?
I just have a brief question. We're, we're talking today about your qualifications to testify, and I have no objection to that. But it's my understanding, the device which is utilized to measure sound, I believe it's produced in Europe, is it not, in Germany perhaps?
The manufacturer of our sound level meter?
Yes.
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Okay, now, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, that this sound meter must be certified or tested after so many uses or after so many months of use. Could you tell me, what was the last time the sound meter that you utilized was tested for its accuracy?
Sure. So, our sound level meters are highly technical pieces of equipment, as, as you're alluding to.
I'm sorry?
They're highly technical pieces of equipment. They're, they're very high functioning. A computer in your palm, if you will. And so, annually, we take each sound level meter and send it out for individual calibration. And we also calibrate annually a calibrator. And before and after every measurement, we calibrate the meter using the calibrator to ensure that there is no deviation.
Did you do that personally, or did someone in your office?
No, I, I physically did the measurements for this project.
Thank you.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mueller, you submitted the report that's dated in November, you prepared the report that was dated November 3rd of 2021?
Correct.
And we submitted that prior to the hearing, so the board members should have that. And we're going to be referring to some exhibits shortly. And, Mr. Chair, the exhibits that we have are within the report, but, but Mr. Mueller blew them up because it's hard to see them. But before we get to the exhibits, can you describe for the board generally what you did and when you did it, so that they understand the process under which you conducted the study?
Certainly. So, I understand that there was another consultant before me. I'm not speaking to or covering any of the information that was previously covered. My narrow scope here was, as just previously discussed, there were some members of the board who went to a live demonstration of operation of the facility. And so, I was brought in after the fact to quantify that using our sound level meter in order to be able to present that data to the remaining members of the board or for any public who were not able to participate in that demonstration.
Okay. And then, can you describe the day you went, what the conditions were, how long you were there, and what you observed physically, not, not in terms of what you measured, but what you observed physically?
Well, I went on the morning of Halloween, so it was Sunday, the 31st. And despite being told all week long that it was going to be a washout, it actually wasn't. It was actually worked well. We, in the morning, there was light mist, so there was some precipitation, but nothing that was, that obscured or hampered our, our acoustical evaluation. And the, the temperatures were, we, it was light jacket weather. I have it here. Hold on. 60 degrees and light winds.
And what type of activity was occurring on site during the time period that you conducted your study?
Right. So, this was an organized event, I guess, much like the demonstration that was previously discussed. So, upon arrival, there was no activity on site. Uh, so upon arrival, there was no activity onsite. And what we coordinated was very similar to what was observed. And we had a, a portion of riders in the advanced, some riders in the junior. And then we also did a separate survey of, of trail bikes going around the riding trail.
And do you know how many bikes were onsite?
Uh, there was seven, uh, 15.
15, okay. Now, again, before we refer to the exhibits, can you describe to the board how one conducts a sound study?
Certainly, um, so the, the goal, of course, was to kind of replicate what was just described that the people of the board had gone through. However, we did have some, to make some adjustments to allow for efficiency, but also to kind of keep things carpet compartmentalized, excuse me. So the first thing that, none of our measurements or survey was done offsite. As was just mentioned, the further away from the noise source you get, the more, the, the more contamination or interference you might get from other noise sources. So all of our noise sources were done inside the perimeter fence that was constructed in the facility. And one of the advantages of doing all of our measurements in there was that we had ease of, ease of transportation. So we were able to move around the site more frequently. If, if we had conducted the measurements outside of the property, it would have dramatically increased the abilities to, to go around the, the facility. The, the purpose then was to select, select locations that were in proximity to receptors of interest. And usually, or all of those were selected based on, on distance, so who was closest to onsite activity. And we picked receptors to the north, to the west, and to the south to then go and stand and, and measure in real time the live actions of operations onsite.
And the, the, the equipment that you were questioned about previously, is that a handheld doc, a, a, a piece of equipment that you take with you to the various sites?
Correct, yeah, yes.
All right, and then if we refer now to exhibit, page three of the report for the board members is a map that identifies four locations. And we've, and that's the plan that's behind you, is that right, Ben?
Correct, yeah, this is figure one from our November 3rd report.
But since it's on a board, we'd like to mark it A10.
Fine. Ian will mark it, A10, Ian.
Thank you.
All right, so what is, what is the significance of those four numbers that are in white circles?
So what we're looking at here on exhibit A10 is a, a Google Earth aerial image, as recent as can be, uh, but basically it does depict what I found to be current conditions onsite. And what we've done is overlaid it with a red outline, which approximates the property line. There is a blue outline, which approximates the perimeter fence that was established. And so again, as we just discussed, the, all measurements were made inside of that blue line. And then what we see here is four locations numbered 1, 2, 3, and 4. And those were the locations that we took, um, the, the measurements at from the site activity. Location 1 is to the northwest, uh, kind of where the, both the property line and the perimeter fence do a, a jog along the north boundary, closest to dwellings on Leon Drive. Location 2 is kind of central in the site, on the west-hand side, um, in the direction of Hawkins Road. Location 3 is in the southwest corner of the perimeter fence. And location 4 is, uh, is almost due south of, of the, the advanced and the junior courses.
And then at those four locations, can you describe for the board exactly what you did in terms of the testing and?
Right.
And how you, how you calculated and/or quantified your results?
Certainly, um, so what we coordinated here was that we were at each of the four locations and we conducted two tests. So one test was to operate, um, the off-road vehicles on the advanced and the junior track. And then we coordinated a second set of tests to, to measure only the trail. And the reason why we separated the two is because, um, as I learned from my, my time there, a, a lap or, or amount of times it takes a, a, an off-road vehicle to do a circuit around both the advanced and the junior track is only a couple of minutes. Whereas if, if vehicles were on the perimeter around the, the trail, which isn't, isn't marked here, but you can kind of see, and I believe there are other exhibits that were submitted that show exactly where it is, but that trail is much longer. And so if you were to have a group of bikes go through there, it might take more like 10 minutes to have a, a single pass by. And so what we did for a second group of tests was just have a, a chain of trail bikes go through in our same four locations.
And then you got, you received data somehow on that piece of equipment?
Yes, correct.
What does that data, what do you get from that data? And then what results? Did you, did, let me, let me rephrase it first, before you get to that exhibit.
Okay.
When you did your test at each location, you, you received certain data from that piece of equipment, correct? And then you came back a second time and did the same four locations and had additional data?
Correct.
And then do you, do you then graph each of those eight results to come up with a, a report? Or do you do each one separately?
We, we look at all, since, since the, the off-road vehicle activity is dynamic and there are mobile noise sources, it's very important to, to measure over a long duration. And so what we did for our series of test ones is we measured for at least a five-minute period, somewhere six minutes. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that we got multiple pass, uh, multiple circuits, multiple pass-bys by the vehicles as they were operating. When we did the second set of tests, which we'll talk about in a moment, uh, for the trail bikes, um, we basically conducted a test, uh, a little over a minute duration. And that was the amount of time it took us to have visual contact with the bikes and then see them pass by, and then as they trailed off out of sight. So those are the two types of, of measurements that we took. Uh, but for both of them, we did the same thing. We brought the information back to the lab, reduced the data. Um, I have it blown up, which is included in the appendix in our report here to, to go over. Uh, but this was a helpful tool to look at this in, in, in real time, given that our, our ears weren't able to, to be there for, for all observers.
So the exhibit that you have is appendix B of your report, I believe?
Correct.
And that would be A11?
Yes. Uh, so this is pages 8 and 9 from the report, or excuse me, uh, pages 7 and 8 is what we have here on the first one. And then 2 on A11 here. Um, and so we have locations 1, 2, 3, and 4 in graphic form from test 1, which was when the advanced and junior, uh, area activity was occurring. Also shown on the bottom, to tie them together though, is, uh, the table within our report. So the exhibit A11 also includes the associated excerpt from?
Which is on page?
Table on page 4, correct. So, uh, just to walk through, um, we looked at our, our figure before and exhibit A10, and we saw that the, the various locations around the site that we surveyed were, uh, different distances from the activity. That being the case, there, you know, at a certain receptor vantage point, you will have a certain degree of line of sight, or there'll be a certain elevation associated with it. Uh, so depending on where you are on the site at any time, um, there can, you could receive sound differently. And that's kind of what we end up showing here in our graphics. So a location 1, which again was to the northwest of the site, we basically hit, recorded on our sound level meter, and then we recorded for, for five minutes in duration. And so that's time along the bottom of the graph. And along the left side of your graph is gonna be the sound level. And, um, although I blew it up, I'm sure people far away have difficulty seeing it, but basically, levels are anywhere from about 45, uh, up to a little over 60. And what we focused on during that five-minute period, even though you can see that there's highs and lows and everything in between, uh, but the focus is always in what was the maximum level? And the maximum level occurred at 105518, uh, you know, at, at this specific, um, first location 1, and that the level for the maximum was 62.4.
And what is the, um, maximum under the ordinance for daytime activity?
Sure, so the, the, the state and local code actually align quite nicely. Uh, Jackson has a, a version of the model noise ordinance, and so the, the level during the daytime is 65 dB.
I'm sorry, to the chair, can you compare that 65 dB to an appliance or something we all use daily? Is the noise level comparison? A lawnmower, um, a weed whacker, I, I?
Those are, so, um, I don't have a specific reference for you, but a, a lot of the board members really hit the nail on the head when they were using their description of being able to talk without an amplified voice. And so that 65 is designed to be the sound level that two people will be three feet apart to talk without having to elevate their voices. So with a code limit of 65, the idea is that matching that level would be right about at the threshold before you start to have to, to do so. Lawn equipment can be 65, but I would say it would be at a distance of, you know, your next door neighbor's house, not, not your, your own lawn. Um, and that, that code limit is, applies for the entire daytime period, which is 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Uh, and there are also octave bands associated with that, octave bands, um, similar to the octaves on the piano. And we have those down here below too, we'll get into that in a second. But if we just then move more quickly through other locations, uh, location 2, which again was on the far west side, even though it's basically the view or the scale here is different, so the levels here still go from 45 to 60, uh, the highest level being 59 and some change, almost 60. At location 3 in the southwest, we got among, uh, uh, the lowest maximum levels, uh, was also the furthest from all of that onsite activity. We got a maximum level of 55. And then at location 4, which was due south, uh, we had a maximum level of 64.8. So that's right at that, that 65 dB number we're discussing. And we also took every single one of these maximum levels and broke it into what their, their octave band content is. And the reason why the state and local ordinance have octave band, uh, requirements as well is to make sure that we don't have anything that's too tonal or, or annoying or has a, a, a factor in there that could be perceived with higher annoyance. And so when we took those maximum levels and broke them out, we see that for all the locations, we have full compliance. Um, the only area which has a slight exceedance, or I don't even wanna say exceedance, but has levels that are higher than the, the permissible limit was at location 4 for this one short pass by here, which totaled about eight seconds of the six-minute period. And we have levels at 2,000 hertz of 60 dB when the daytime code limit is 57. So what we did is we looked at that further, and we said, okay, well, we took that level that we measured, realizing that we were about 350 feet away from the advanced track. That's where all these maximum levels were occurring from. And then we projected it further south, about 550 feet to the nearest dwelling. And we have levels that are 4 dB lower than what we have measured here, right? Because then we're outside of the fence and at area of repose. And so the conclusions from all this activity is that we fully comply with the state and local noise ordinances.
Okay, and then you have the other set of tests that you could not?
Correct. So in similar fashion, uh, we then went and conducted a, an organized, um, trail riding train, if you will.
We just have to identify that, so that's?
This is, gonna be A12, correct? And this is kind of, uh, part two of our appendix B, as well as, uh, the second half of the table on page 4.
So it's pages 9 and 10 of the report?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, as well as the lower half of the table on, on page 4. Um, so what we see here, though, is it, is a little bit of a different signature than what we saw with the, the, the circuit riding, right? On the advanced and the junior track. And that's because the trail riding, even though it has more bikes closer together, we end up seeing more of a bell curve. Instead of seeing multiple spikes across the period, these bikes kind of travel, um, you know, like, like in, uh, like an elephant chain where they're just connected there. Each one was about three or four feet away from the, the other one. And, and so as they pass by, as they approached the microphone location, I'm, I'm looking at location 2 here, uh, just for illustrative purposes, um, but you can see that the levels are, are at or near background. And then as the group come by, they start to pass. And when they're all kind of in closest proximity to the measurement location is when we see our maximum level. And then as they all trail away, that level continues to fall off. And so just running around our measuring locations, at location 1, we had a maximum of about 55 from the pass by. At location 2, 53. At location 3, we had 48 dB. And at location 4, we had 59, again, location 4 being the closest to that trail and that activity. Um, breaking that down into the octave bands from our table in page 4, uh, we see that, that, not even at the 2,000 hertz, does anything come close to, um, coming near the, the daytime code octave band limits?
Now, um, under the ordinances and the state code, do you measure to the property line or to the, to the, the neighboring property line? Where do you measure to?
Right, so the, the code per definition is to be measured at or within the property. Um, that's a little bit complicated language, because most everyone assumes then the property line is the closest, that that's where you measure. However, um, state enforcement, uh, the DEP has released a guideline letter about how to enforce. And, and, uh, when you look at other language contained within the noise code, it's always measured at the area of repose. And that's where, where the areas, the property is, is habitated. Um, so it might be a backyard, it might be, um, you know, an area where you have a picnic table. For a commercial building, it'll be, uh, you know, where, where smokers congregate, um, but it wouldn't be the parking lot, for example. So, uh, for residential properties, um, I'm mostly concerned about backyards, uh, at the dwelling, um, things of that nature. So while we did do our measurements, um, very close to the property line, the, 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 the code really triggers in more of where, um, folks are, that's the purpose of it.
And as a result of all these studies and the graphs that you produced, you, your, and your report has a conclusion, but can you summarize for the board what your conclusion was as relates to the sound generated from this use?
Certainly, so we, we went and surveyed the, the real demonstration.
Please, anybody with their phones, please shut them off. It's very difficult for listening.
Uh, we, we conducted a, a real demonstration of what the site is going to be used. Use that at, at, at its most capacity. And for all the locations, all the types of activity that we measured, uh, we showed full compliance with the noise code. Uh, again, uh, while not presented in the graphics that we've shown here, um, we too were witness to levels of equal or higher magnitude from, uh, other outside activities such as traffic. The, the conclusion based on all of this is that this is not, uh, an activity that's gonna be complaint-worthy, and we don't expect any sort of, uh, issues with complying with the state or local noise code.
That's all we have. Want Mr. Gazarovski or the board?
I want you to come back.
I just have several questions. In, in various parts of your report, you refer to, uh, what's called a receptor. In another instance, you refer to it as a residential receptor. Uh, my understanding of the code is, is that the only area where noise is measured is at the property line of the person creating that noise or at his property. Am I wrong in saying that?
Yes.
I'm wrong?
Correct.
Well, show me, show me in the code where it says otherwise.
First of all, there's two different, um, corrections or, or, or adjustments, adjustments, I guess, I should make to that.
I'm sorry?
There's two, two points I wanna make.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Two points to make. First is that the code is a receiving code. So it's only, it, as a matter of instance, that we have the adjacent properties, sharing a boundary or sharing a property line here. Uh, but for example, the residents across Hawkins Road, the, the code, 65 code that we're talking about, triggers at their property line. It does not apply in rights of way, it doesn't apply for vacant land, which this land is owned, uh, I believe, by the, the state. And it wouldn't apply, uh, in, in rights of way. So that being said?
I'm, I'm looking at the exhibit in question, and what you have there is an area which is outlined in red and an area which is outlined in blue. The area outlined in blue, as I understand it, reflects, uh, the fence line, correct? The area outlined in red, uh, outlines the area where the site itself is being utilized for, for lack of a better term, the motorcycles or ATVs or whatever they may be. The red is, the red is the property line. My understanding of it is that when you're measuring noise, you measure it at the property line of the subject property. Am I in? Show me where it says that in the code.
Do you have a copy of the code?
No, I don't, you're the expert, not me.
I'm telling you what it says.
Well, what, what do you call the receptor? You're saying that if there's a house a thousand feet away, that's where you measure the noise at, because that's the receptor?
Correct.
You're saying it says that specifically in the code?
My testimony had two parts.
Okay.
The, the code itself says at or within the property.
At or within the property, right.
And then there are guidelines produced by?
I don't wanna hear about guidelines, I wanna know, I wanna know what it says. It says at or within the property line. Does it say anywhere in there outside the property line? Within means within the property itself, not outside a hundred feet away or a thousand feet away.
Within the property of the receptor.
My understanding of how these machines operate, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, there are different speeds which can be utilized for those larger bikes or ATVs or whatever they are called, are there not?
Even though I'm an expert in noise, based on my personal experience, yes, there are gears on off-road vehicles.
Would you agree with me that if you're operating one of these machines, the greater the acceleration or the faster you're riding it, the greater noise emanating from it? Okay. So if, in fact, one were traveling along at five miles an hour and one were then traveling along at thirty miles an hour, the noise emanating from the machine going at thirty miles an hour would be greater? Now, looking at the machines in question, and let's focus on the larger machines, okay? What are they identified as? Now, four hundred and fifty CC is relatively medium to larger sized machine, is it not? Okay. Now, do you know how fast those machines were going when you took your measurements?
Thank you. No, I do not have an idea.
Well, if you don't know how fast they were going, how can you possibly present testimony saying the noise being generated by the was lower than that which was permitted by the ordinance? Because if you're going slower, the noise is less, isn't it?
Mr. Chair, first, I just want to object to the form of question. He testified as to what he observed.
I'm sorry?
He testified as to what he observed. You're not questioning what he observed.
Wait, 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 wait. It's not what he observed. He is an expert, and he's giving testimony to this board what the noise was generated from those machines. He acknowledges that the faster you're going, the louder the noise. He has no idea how fast they were going. So how could that testimony be accepted?
Well, you asked him a question, he answered it. I'm just trying to get it focused. He testified as to what he observed. You could disagree as to what his conclusions were, but that's-
I can provide a little extra insight to your question. So based on my observations of the vehicles, not on the sound level meter, but my observations, that they were operating their vehicles as they are intended to do so. Now, with the advanced track, you have jumps, you have other obstacles, they have to go over them at a certain speed in order to make that jump. So I do not feel in any way that they were under throttling or misrepresenting activity
I didn't say that they were under throttling. I asked you how fast they were going. You said you didn't know. Now you're saying, I believe that in certain areas of this, when they're going over jumps and the like, they were accelerating, correct?
I would assume yes.
Okay, now you also testified, and I think that Mr. Genosha was present also, was he not?
Right here, yes.
Good evening. And you said he was showing off?
No, I didn't say that.
You didn't say that? Was he throttling? Was he going fast?
He was not operating, he was with me the entire time.
He wasn't on the bike at all?
No, sir.
Did you, I have no further questions.
Thank you.
Any redirect?
No.
Any board members want a question or witness regards to his findings?
Yes, Jay. This is, I'm sorry, is it Mr. Mueller?
Mueller.
Mueller, sorry. Mr. Mueller, I had one question at the beginning of your testimony, which Mr. Gassarowski, quite frankly, just brought up. And it relates to the speed of these vehicles. Now, I don't know anything about these vehicles, and trust me, at my age, I don't want to know anything about these vehicles. I will not be riding one of these vehicles. But I do have neighbors. I live in an active adult community. I do have neighbors who ride motorcycles, okay? And I have a neighbor who may be a block and a half away, but every once in a while he'll gun that engine. And you'll hear it, it's very, very noisy. So my question here is, while these folks were riding these fifteen vehicles, now I wasn't there, I had no intent of going for specific reasons. As these vehicles were driving, if they were driving at a constant speed, which Mr. Gassarowski just brought up, they brought up at a constant speed, I assume the noise level would be certain. What if they gunned it? You know, now, everybody is younger than I am, so a lot of these kids love to make these things sound great. You know, when I was a kid, we used to have something called a glass pack muffler. I have no idea what that was, but it was loud. So I don't know what kind of condition. Do you have any idea what the conditions of these vehicles were? What equipment?
Sure, I can speak to it based on my experience during the survey. So pulling up first here, this is exhibit twelve. Again, this is the test two on the trail. So this is where we had six off-road bikes, trail bikes, traveling in tandem. Based on my observation, the shape and the nature of the trail around the perimeter facility does not have straight passes, straight ways. There were no areas to open throttle. The nature of the off-road trail was to kind of have constant weaves and to get that feel of turning. And so what you see here is there aren't any dynamic bursts of throttle, right? Especially because they're in a closer group, there's obviously safety in their operations. And so the maximum level is just at the maximum level is when they're closest to where we measure. Now, in comparison-
Let me introduce you for a moment, because that was my line of question. If there is a burst of throttle, what does that have impact on this? What's the impact on sound?
Well, so the direct translation is the more RPM, the faster the motor's spinning, the higher the level that's generated. That's the simplistic form of it. How that specifically relates to what we measured and where we were is a little bit more complicated. My observations during the day here where we measured is that everything was being operated in a typical fashion.
And just another question, I don't know if you can answer this, but the equipment that was being used, I assume, I shouldn't say that, was it standard equipment?
Yes. Mr. Genus and I went and we looked at all the vehicles before they went. They were all with a stock muffler, which I believe was provided as testimony beforehand. There would be no aftermarket products, which, you know, may tie into your story of your neighbor's motorcycle. A lot of those vehicles are customized and modified.
When he's seventy-five, he thinks he's twelve. All right, thank you.
Okay, so where are we?
Planner, final witness, Ian Borden.
Mr. Chairman, while before or as Mr. Borden is coming up, I just want to remind the public that the public will have an opportunity to ask questions or comment as to both witnesses presented today after you hear them. The Sam guy's not going anywhere. All right, Mr. Borden, you almost read. Thank you, sir, for raising your hand. Mr. Borden, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony information? Questions or comments you have to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and then through the chairman, let's say, the longer version of your credentials?
Certainly. I feel maybe I should allow Ron to do it, because he's cross-examining enough, he knows it by heart. My name is Ian Borden. I'm the president of Professional Design Services, engineering and surveying firm located in Lakewood, New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree in nineteen eighty-two from Rutgers University. I've been working in the planning field since nineteen eighty-three. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I have been employed at PDS since nineteen ninety-six and president since two thousand and five, and have offered planning testimony to many planning, zoning, and land use boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
I have no objection to Mr. Borden testifying, but my understanding is his testimony and his qualifications are limited solely to that of being a planner, not an engineer, not a traffic consultant, or anything else.
That's correct. Okay, and Mr. Borden, I think we're going to need Anthony now, right? You have-
Yeah, Anthony, do you have those files that we have given months ago? Of the aerials?
Aerial.
Okay. I can use the aerial as well as if you have that.
Well, you can just be, it's going to be hard to do because it was part of that report, so I don't know if you can blow it up. But that's, we're looking at A ten, is that correct, Ian?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you identify for the board, and I know you did testify at the beginning of the hearing, but it's been so long that I'm going to ask you to identify where this property is located and what the surrounding uses are.
So the property contains fifty-nine acres. It is located in the northeast corner of northeast sector of Hawkins Road, looking at A ten, which runs north is generally, I believe, to the top of this map. So Hawkins Road runs vertically on the left side, and then along the bottom here, you see West Veterans Highway, Route five twenty-eight, both county roads. And we're in the northeastern portion of the site, fifty-nine acres. The site is undeveloped. The site is in the R five residential zone. East of the site, recall when we discussed the project, our property is owned by the state of New Jersey. That's part of the Cuyers Mills Wildlife Management Area. And generally, the zoning is R five and R three. R five along Veterans, except for there's areas of neighborhood commercial along the corner, the intersection of Hawkins and Veterans. And then the area to the north is R three.
And across the street to the west, I guess?
Yeah, Hawkins Road, thank you, South. Hawkins Road services in municipal boundary. And so the areas to the west of Hawkins Road are residentially zoned and developed with single-family homes in the west.
What town is that?
Plumstead.
Plumstead. Okay. And you understand that we're here for devariance relief, use variance relief, this use is not permitted in the zone, is that correct?
Of course.
And there are certain proofs that one needs to put on the record to support devariance relief. Can you try to do that?
Absolutely. We'll start with the purposes of zoning. Obviously, as a devariance, we have to relate the variance to a piece of property, and we have to, my obligation is to address the purpose of the municipal land use law to show that it's advanced by the deviation from the zoning ordinance. In my opinion, this project meets purposes of zoning for five of the criteria listed in the ordinance. First is A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare. C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. G, to provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses according to the respective environmental requirements to meet the needs of all New Jersey residents. I, to provide a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques. And J, to promote conservation of open space by the resources and so forth, urban sprawl and degradation of the environment.
Now, Ian, before you continue, you mentioned that the purposes of zoning that you were referring to are in the ordinance, they're also in the municipal land use law. Okay, no, I'm sorry.
So in order to support that argument, we must show that this site is obviously particularly suitable. We're very familiar with devariances, the site is obviously not, the project is obviously not used. So it's all confusion to show that this site is particularly suitable, thereby not have negative impacts on the intended purpose of self-planting ordinance as well as on the above. So in our case, we are proposing recreational use in a residential zone. I think it's important that this discussion I'm about to have, and I know I stress this, I believe we discussed it briefly, I gave my initial testimony. In this particular case, I find this use variance different than most any other, too, as you might have seen. Because the use of riding an ATV on this property is something that the landlord is entitled to, and we're trying to set up this club, this membership club that produces that. I think that's important as a background, known or to be named for Dr. Griffin, one or two or three acres. There's no regulations that would mention any of that, so riding an ATV on a property. I personally am very excited, acre that's about come off the net in this setting, and I agree, it's a lot of the components. I think that's important. But first, let's talk about zoning a bit more in detail. The, I think it's looking at the R five zone, obviously, the density in the R five zone is a maximum of one unit per five acres. So the ultimate involvement, the importance with the ordinance would be eleven, potentially twelve, six or five homes. But I think it's also notable that the R five zone permits two uses, which I believe are pretty similar to what we're proposing here. For one thing, the R five zone permits public recreational uses. And secondly, it also permits quasi, what they define as, quote, quasi-public, private club recreation areas as a condition of use. Now, I'm not here to claim that we meet that conditional use, because I don't know, we don't, I don't believe it would fit in the definition of that. But I think it's close enough, I think it's helpful. Under the ordinance, quasi-public and private club recreation areas, what have parks, playgrounds, kind of storage, and other such activities? And the additional uses are A through. F, I'm not completely, which, because, yeah, I'm not trying to argue that we meet that conditional use, otherwise it would be. But just as a general statement, the minimum required minimum lot size for those uses are one acre. And building coverage is twenty-five percent, and the minimum on occupied open space is twenty-five percent. So in our case, obviously, we have, we're not proposing development, we have nobody covered, and based with our dangers, it's open space, we're not proposing any development or any public resources. I think that the core of my argument as to the purposes of zoning, thereby negative impacts, is the particulars of the building of the site. And as we have discussed, and as I'm having to repeat, the site has been previously disturbed, has testified to previous meetings and so many tests tonight. I've almost, on the, I've seen job, central portion of the property with seven and eight ten, and then certain of the board members have seen it, has been previously disturbed, and the topography is quite a bit lower than surrounding property, evidence to me, at least, and it only that it is mine for resource extraction. The site has been the subject of off-road trespass for many years. There was photographic evidence presented in the first hearing, if you recall, showed the missing news for the property, the pictures of pickup trucks and bikes and trucks that were just riding out there, the pictures of large amount of garbage that were removed from the property. Site is adjacent, as I noted, the state, again, speaking to the particular individuals with the building, is adjacent to the state properties. So eliminating legal trespass on this property will serve to eliminate trespass, how minimal is trespass on the state-owned properties since I think most of the vehicles are trespassing coming through the trails that were in the state property. As I stated, we have no building coverage, no purchase- As I stated, we have no building coverage, no purchase coverage, we have no increased storm runoff. We're protecting open space there by not removing any vegetation, no trees.
Mr. Board, I apologize. Maybe I'm lost. I'll have to be the scribbler. Isn't there a house being built on this?
That's not part of this application.
Well, you're gonna have two principal uses on the property.
Separate, separate lot, completely separate, has a building permit.
Is there a subdivision application?
The house is on a separate property, it's not part of the subdivision.
Separate lot, or the separate tax lot.
So they are two separate lots, however, access to this lot is dependent upon access through that adjacent lot, which is common ownership. And that's why it's depicted on this plan. Technically, it is part of this application because of the access. However, Lot thirty-six point oh one is a separate lot of record. And there'll likely be an access easement or agreement between the two lots in order to access this lot.
So I appreciate clarification.
Question?
Yes.
Let me ask the engineer. Are there any problems here with, with the access to what is proposed for the recreational area? Is there sufficient, maybe you should go, well, to the engineer, but is there sufficient width in accordance with our ordinance, or is there a C variance required?
So we don't have that, and we don't have the dimensions of the access driveway on the plan. We did, we did bring that up in our review letter from a while back, that we would like to see some specific dimensions. This is a, this is a single-use driveway, we'll call it. It is improved, it is semi-improved, it is, it does consist of gravel and recycled millings. But as far as the exact width, I, we don't see that on the plan. If I had to estimate, I'd say probably close to sixteen to eighteen feet wide.
So the, the property on which the home is being built, was the access to the rear of the property?
Correct.
So if we treat that, if we treat the house as a separate lot, and we treat the recreational area as a separate lot, where is the access to the recreational area? Through the residential lot?
Yes, so there's a single driveway entrance off of Hawking Road. That is a, the primary purpose of that is the residential driveway. Off of the residential driveway, between the road and the house, there is a T intersection, which then takes you back to the recreation facility.
But I get, my concern here is, I don't know if we're gonna get to a point where we actually have to make a decision this evening or not. But my problem here is that we may be granting something, if a C variance is required but not noticed, we may have a problem here. Not all C variances are, are subsumed into the D variance.
Which C var, what C variances would you be concerned about? Because there are no.
With the access.
For the access. There would, I'll let Ian, I'll let Ian provide testimony on that. It's my, it's my belief that a C variance is not required for that, but we haven't heard testimony specific to that. So I would let Ian comment on that.
My concern is we don't know.
I would let, I would let Ian provide testimony on that.
There's no bulk zone requirement to dictate the driveway. There's no bulk zone requirement to dictate the driveway. It's not on. Oh, it's on. Okay. Is that okay?
Yes.
There is no bulk zone requirements to dictate the driveway that would, that would require a C variance, or no C variances for this.
So this will just.
We, it is, it is an easement through the single-family lot.
So it will be an access easement.
Yes.
Granted by the owner of the residential lot to the owner of the, what will be a commercial.
Correct, which is the same person.
It may or may not be.
I understand.
It's an LLC. The LLC membership can change tomorrow.
You're correct.
I understand.
You're correct. Go ahead, Ian. You were mentioning no, no additional purpose.
So, and, and, and so, as, as far as the particular suitability, we have the, the active riding area, the center part of the site, the rest area, again, no trees being removed. We have the trail area around it with the junior trail, particular location in the southwest corner, such that the junior trail area, the junior riding area, I'm sorry. The junior riding area in the southwest corner is the one closest to the residential lots along Veterans and Hawken. So the, the site, topography and vegetation frankly helps us to dictate that. And as evidenced by the noise analysis done by, by Ostergard, I think those results that we heard testimony on tonight show that there is no, certainly any negative noise impacts beyond those regulated by the Norris Ordinance. So I think that factors certainly into the suitability of the site, too. So based upon all of that, in my opinion, this variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantially impairing the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and ordinance.
All right, and Ian, if you.
I would, I would also, and I'm sorry, Sal, I skipped over something in my notes, and relevant to the area, here we're talking about an ATV, previous illegal use, we're, we're proposing to do this club here. There's other outdoor activities in the area. We have the Central Jersey Rifle and Pistol Club, which is down my road, Stump Tavern Road, can't believe, I forgot the name of my road. And I would also note, I think it's appropriate to say this in direct testimony.
Yes.
I'm sorry, how far?
Not that far, it doesn't give me measure.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's less than a mile. I'm sorry. Right. And there's other gun clubs in the area, there's hunting gun clubs, two that are located within a mile, one north and one east, that they hunt, you know, they hunt the state properties. But my point is that active outdoor recreation is, that's my point, is, is a common feature out here, and certainly this, this project promotes a lawful use of the land as compared to the trespass that had occurred before the Januses provided their ownership and stewardship to the, to the property. I would note, I think, Sal, could I talk about Mr. Gazarovski's client?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you that.
Okay. Mr. Gazarovski is here representing the Clayton families, the Clayton family's own the Glidden property.
Bob, let me use your microphone, huh?
I have to consult with legal.
Let him finish, Steve.
Right, twelve.
I've identified myself, I've identified my client, I've identified him as a person who is a property owner. What business he operates or where he lives is of no relevance to the testimony being given by this witness. If he, if Mr. Alfery wants to subpoena my client, he can certainly do that, but certainly this witness is not qualified, nor is the questioning or is the answer relevant or proper.
Well, and, and the counter is that, the case law says that if you're outside of two hundred feet of the property, you may have a special interest in the application, and is relevant to determine where the objector is located and what impact, if any, this would have on the objector. So all we're gonna introduce is how far the Clayton property is to this property, that's all we're gonna say, we're not getting any further in what they do on their property.
You having an objection to that?
If he, if he wanted to stipulate as to the distance between my client's property and this client, this property, fine, but other than that.
That's all we wanna do.
None of it's relevant.
Good, we're in agreement, I like that.
What's the answer?
The, the, the Glidden property that the Clayton's own, that are, they are concerned about, and, and let me put on the record that they called me, I mean, a representative from Clayton called me to discuss the project.
I'm gonna object, it's outside the scope of the testimony.
What do you mean? It, it's, it could be an adverse declaration of interest. If, if they, if so, if he is testifying that your client called him directly, he's repeating that comment, he has the right to, he has the right to say that. It's a, potentially, he's a declaration against interest.
We're, we're not gonna.
No, no, I, I'm not, my point is that I understand the property.
We're not gonna repeat.
That's my only point, and the property is six miles away.
Okay.
Okay, and then Ian, one final question as it relates to the driveway. If the board or the board professionals felt comfortable widening that to twenty or twenty-four feet to gravel driveway, would there be any issue in doing that?
Not at all.
Okay, that's all the testimony we have.
So I would just ask one question. Are you making the recommendation to be widened to twenty-four feet? Sometimes you, some of these technical things, you're leaving too open to the board.
Well, I, I would say that if whatever Mr. Miskovitz feels is the appropriate width, we would agree to do, because he's the, he's the expert who was most qualified to respond to that.
Good answer. All right, so we got the board members, any questions?
No.
Too fast. Oh, you wanna hear his, what?
Thank you very much. Mr. Boarden, I wanted to just clarify what you said with regard to the lot that the residence is on. Is your testimony that the residence is on a separate lot, is that correct?
Yes.
And that would be known as Lot thirty-six point oh one?
Yes.
And I, and I think your testimony was, is that there is solely a house or a residence on that lot, which is a permitted use, correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, I, I'm looking at the variance plan, which is dated, I believe, August four of two thousand and twenty-one, is that what you were also looking at?
Yes.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
I don't.
You do not?
I do not.
Okay, thank you. I, I have the small version, just take a look at that just to make sure that they're the same.
Yes. Is it? Yes, I didn't.
Okay. The most, the most up, the most up-to-date variance plan package that we have was last revised on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Did you hear that?
I didn't hear that.
The, the most current variance plan that's been submitted to the board is September seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Do you have that one, Mr. Board?
I do not. Mr. Boarden does not have it.
They're up, we have them on the computer, though. You wanna see it up there?
May I just see what you have there? There may not be much of a difference.
Yeah, could you pull it up on the thing you're in?
Board, do you wanna share this with? Chairman, while Mr. Gazarovski is looking at that plan, to save some time, can I, can I ask a legal question of our attorney?
Absolutely.
Because I'm still stuck with this access issue. My understanding is, if you have a, I shouldn't say my understanding, the question is, if you have a non, you have a conforming. Doesn't get any closer.
It was his mic.
Oh, oh, no wonder I couldn't move. Okay, let me get back to the question. If you have a, a, if you have two lots, which apparently we have here, we have more than two lots, we have two adjoining lots, and one conforms and one doesn't, don't they merge? By operation of law, and doesn't a, isn't a subdivision required?
One would think.
Yeah. Attorney.
I think the applicant would have to, the applicant's team would have to explain how we ended up with lots separate. But yes, there's, sort of zoning officer one oh one, lots in common ownership are deemed to be merged for the purposes of zoning. So that burden would rest with the applicant to explain how we got to this point.
Well, and, and they are owned by different entities today, right? One property, to my knowledge, is owned by Nicholas Janus individually, and the other is owned by an LLC.
Are they both applicants, or the two applicants, or one applicant?
Both.
They're, they're listed in the notice?
I guess the question is, when did that happen? I mean, they could have merged prior to him taking title.
But Mr. Janus, I, I don't know the answer, but we can answer that, it's the first time, obviously, it's come up, so.
We've had four hearings, and this is the first time this is being asked, honestly. So I, I would like to add one fact, though, Sean, I think that's relevant to this discussion, and that is that it, it was a brief statement made in the initial hearing, I'm sure nobody remembers it, I don't expect anybody to remember it, but, but these properties that are the subject of the application have a small throat of property with a small bit of frontage out to East Veterans Road, Highway, or West Veterans, I'm sorry. So, so they have separate road access, and frankly, if, if, if there is concern about access through the residential lot, we could easily, we, we, we propose not to do the, if you remember, we propose not to do the access there, not to create a separate access to, to West Veterans, but if that's a concern, we could, we could simply use that portion of the property.
So, so let me just be frank and put on the record from my perspective, why I asked the question I asked, so that everyone's on the same page representing the board where my head was. And that is, my recollection and review of the testimony intricately tied the house and the fact that Mr. Janus was living there and controlling it to the activities going on in the back. And that even though, from an access perspective, for instance, you are willing to provide this separate access, my recollection, and if that recollection is incorrect, and not the board's recollection, that's something different, but it was a, it was your testimony that you didn't want that separate access, so that the controls that you did want, you, your client wanted, could remain.
That is correct. That is correct. Certainly, the fact that Mr. Janus is gonna live in the house creates a stewardship environment where he could oversee and.
Which relates back to.
Supervise the property.
Yeah, which relates back to Mr. Hill's clarification of, again, I enunciated it, but the recollection, I think the recollection of the board, that they, it's, that lot is an integral part.
Okay.
We can clarify the ownership issue to avoid the merger question when you're finished with this line of question.
Skip, and I'm a little bit confused by it, because I've listened to Mr. Boarden's testimony and some of the other comments, and I'm looking now at the plan, which was just given to me, it's dated September the twenty-eighth of two thousand and twenty, it's a variance plan for lots twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-five, and thirty-six point oh one. Well, the lot that the house is located on is Lot thirty-six point oh one. When you look at the balance of the property where this project is situated, it has no frontage on a public street, it has no frontage on Hawken Road, other than an ingress and an egress through a driveway. So there must be a variance application for that. He must get a variance for constructing a project such as this with no frontage on a public road. In addition to that, he doesn't even own the driveway, it's reflected as being by Mr. Boarden, an easement. So that easement is being used for two, at least two separate uses, one being the residential home, number two being the track in question. There's also reference in some of the testimony of there being a pole barn, P O L E, barn, B A R N, and supposedly, it's gonna be attached to the residence, as one can see, there's been no testimony as to how that pole barn is being utilized.
I was wrong.
Is it being utilized to store vehicles, is it being utilized to store equipment? And if that's the case, then this residence also needs a use variance. If you go back further, you can see that there is a portable, a proposed portable John, well, you don't have a portable John for a residence, you don't have a proposed refuse dumpster for a residence. Going further, we see here, it says car trailer parking, now, obviously, car trailer parking.
Excuse me, I'm gonna interrupt you respectfully, but on purpose.
I'm sorry.
So I'm interrupting you respectfully, but on purpose. So this is your cross-examination? That sounds a lot like closing argument, so if you, hang on, what I'd ask.
Let me, let me, let me proceed forward then, okay? Mr. Board, you testified earlier that these are two, I believe you testified, these are two separate uses on two separate lots, didn't you testify to that?
No, I, I, as you stated. No, I, as you stated, as you pointed out on the variance plan, Lot 36.01, which is the lot that contains the house, is part of the application. That lot is included in the application. We've included the driveway through that lot in this devariance.
So then we would have two uses on one property, would we not?
Yes, correct. We'd have the residential house that's under construction on Lot 36.01, and the recreational use that we're proposing, the devariance on all of the properties, including 36.01.
A separate variance for having two separate uses on one piece of property?
No, I think that's part of this devariance that we're asking for.
Show me where, show me where in your application or in your notice where you're seeking a variance for the construction of a residential home on this property?
I don't have the application with me.
You're testifying as an expert planner, you don't have a copy of the application?
I'm testifying to the uses that we're proposing.
Okay, so let's just look at Lot 36.01. As I look at this plan, 36.01, looking for the North Arrow, the terminus of Lot 36.01 is on the easterly side of the property, correct? Right where it says car trailer parking, correct?
Yes.
You also have their proposed refuse dumpster and proposed portable john. Those are all uses that are part of the operation of the track.
Yes.
And is not, now with regard to the pole barn, how is that being utilized?
That is only for the residential house.
Wait a second.
It's not part of this proposed recreational use.
Could you tell me what a pole barn is?
It's a garage.
What?
It's a garage.
Okay, isn't the garage here larger than the proposed house?
He remind the board that Mr. Genusse is a professional ATV racer in his personal life, not related to the recreational use of this property. And as a result, he has a trailer, he has equipment, he has a motorhome. So he requires a place to store those things. So yes, it's part of Mr. Genusse's residence.
It's part of his business, it's part of a commercial use.
No, it's not.
Okay, what's the square footage of the pole barn?
I do not know. It's not part of this, it's not part of this application.
Well, is, aren't you, in effect, also seeking, in addition to these variances, some type of a site plan approval?
That's the approval of the board. We're not proposing any development, so, but that's for the board to decide.
Well, you're proposing to construct a pole barn, you're proposing to construct a house, and I take it you're proposing to enlarge the trailways, particularly in the area of the Junean Training Area, because when I look at the aerial photograph, I don't see that junior training area in the plan.
If I could address each of those individually.
I'm sorry?
If I could address each of those individually. The house and the pole barn are part of a building permit that's already been issued and is under construction, is part of the house. The, there is no improvements being proposed to the riding area. We're proposing to utilize existing trails, existing topographic features.
Can you show me with the junior training areas on the aerial photograph you have there?
It's in this bottom corner.
Is it discernible? Is it going to be improved, enlarged, changed?
No.
So in other words, every trail which is presently existing out there will remain exactly as it is?
Yes.
Can you tell me when Mr. Genusse and/or his father took title to this property?
I don't have the knowledge of that.
Pardon me?
I do not know.
Okay. Now, are you familiar with the, you're testifying as an expert in the field of planning, are you not?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the master plan in the Township of Jackson?
Yes.
In the master plan of the Township of Jackson, how is this particular property referred to as far as zoning or as far as use?
It's, the master plan identifies this property as being low-density residential in the R5 zone.
Low-density residential.
Yes.
How does that comport with high density of the type of use you're proposing?
Because the 2009 master plan, which is the most recent update of the plan, also contains language directing growth in the goals and objectives into land suitable for land development and away from areas appropriate for resource protection, for example. And that speaks to the particular suitability of the site as a previously disturbed site that we're not proposing to further develop.
Now, with regard to the way in which the property is presently zoned for residential, how long has it been so zoned?
I know that the zoning, I know it was R5 since 2004. I don't know about the period before that.
Okay, so at least approximately 20 years. Now, do you know whether or not either your client or his predecessor in title ever attempted to get the property rezoned for the type of use you're seeking?
My involvement with this client is we've never attempted to rezone the property.
Not with this client?
Yes, I've never worked on this property before I met the Genusse family.
This is really your first exposure to this property. And as the planner, you recommended to your client that he proceed for a use variance rather than seeking a change of zone from the municipal government.
Yes.
Now, you go on to say that this property is particularly suitable. Now, first, we know that it's in a residential zone, correct?
Yes.
We know that it's surrounded by residential uses.
Yes.
We know that the prior owner sometime in the past seemingly utilized this property for the extraction of materials from the ground.
Yes.
And after having done that, he has now sold the property, I take it, to your client, as it presently is?
I don't know if it was the previous owner that did that or not. I don't know who did that, those activities.
So basically, somewhere along the line, we have an owner who basically destroys the environment, destroys the trees, destroys the floor and fauna, and now stuck with this piece of property. You're telling me, as a result of the trespassing, as a result of the improper use, that as a result of that destruction, it now becomes particularly suitable? Is that what you're saying?
Sure.
Right?
Yes.
Okay. Wouldn't some form of isolated or large tract of residential homes also be suitable?
Yes.
Well, that's how it's zoned, isn't it? So if you're saying to me that you could, in fact, put residential houses on larger track-sized lots and it's zoned residential, how does it then become unsuitable for residential and particularly suitable for this particular use? Particularly since the property is zoned for their residential use, which you say is possible, except for the fact that your client wants to run some type of a facility, and I don't want to use the word racing because I don't know exactly what he's doing, but I know that he's having rochers talking in terms of training and teaching people how to ride these vehicles.
I'm going to object to the question because it's positing a position of the law, which I feel.
I'm sorry?
You're giving him a position of the law that I don't think is accurate.
Okay, I would draw the question.
Well, I'd like to address it.
Excuse me. So there's an objection on the record. I'm going to sustain the objection because not only does it call for a legal conclusion, but it's a compound question.
Okay, I accept that, okay?
Yep, I know.
I'm not being disrespectful, Mr. Curt. I've listened to you.
So.
Mr.?
Rephrase the question.
Right, Mr. Borden, for my edification, can you tell me, do you know exactly what type of wheeled or tracked vehicle is being utilized in this facility?
Yes.
What are they?
ATVs and bikes.
What is an ATV?
ATV is a four-wheel off-road vehicle.
Okay, what are the bikes?
They're two-wheeled.
They're two-wheel bicycles? Two-wheel motorcycles?
Yes.
All right, now, I listened to the testimony saying that one of the vehicles will have the capacity of 450 cc's. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are you familiar with what that means?
Yes.
Are you a motorcycle rider?
I, ATV rider.
What?
ATV rider.
Okay, and what cc's do you ride?
I have a 90, a 400, and a 450.
Okay, so 450 is one of the larger vehicles that can be utilized?
Yes.
Okay, now, would you agree with me, when I was cross-examining the noise expert, that the faster your vehicle is going, the louder, the louder noise it makes?
Yes.
Right, were you present at the demonstration which took place a couple of weeks ago or a week ago?
No.
Okay, now, do you know how fast a 450cc motorcycle can go?
Well, yes, but that depends on how much open space one.
I understand all of that, but is, and I, in fact, had such a vehicle, and I can recall riding it, and I know that I get up to speeds in excess of 60 miles an hour.
You're better than, better than me.
Pardon me?
You're better than me. To be 60 miles an hour, you need open road. You cannot ride 60 miles an hour in this type of setting.
But such a vehicle is capable of going 60 miles an hour?
If you, if you put a, any vehicle on a piece of flat road that's a mile long, it'll go 100 miles an hour. But that's not what we're talking about here. And that's, and I want to repeat that that's why the trail area that Mr. Muller so eloquently described in the noise study, that's why the trail area is so windy because the vehicles, we've discussed that, is around the pit. And that's why the pit is oriented, thankfully, and that's part of the particular suitability that's in the center of the site.
But we're talking here, we're not talking about vehicles that are of low cc's, vehicles that are of low speed. We're talking of basically trail bikes, which clearly can have speeds even there in excess of 30 or 40 miles an hour.
Certainly.
And the faster you go, the louder they become.
Not necessarily, because when you go faster, you also go into a higher gear and.
But you have to accelerate.
And as, I understand, but as you reach speed, the RPM of the machine actually decreases.
Now, having said that, when we look at the layout of this and what we were discussing, do you know how many vehicles this site is capable of handling at the same time?
We had agreed to a limitation at a previous meeting.
Fifteen, no more than 15 vehicles.
That'd be 15 vehicles on the bigger tract?
Total, between all three tracks.
Okay, so, but if, in fact, you had more than one vehicle, and those vehicles are riding in close proximity to each other, that's the louder noise they will give off, isn't it?
Yes, and I think that.
I object, he's not qualified to answer a sound. We already heard testimony from the sound expert.
He's a planner.
But he's not a sound expert.
He's a planner. He could testify as the noise.
No, he can't.
You're asking questions as a planner? Now, did you read the? Where's your microphone?
You know what, Mr. Gazarovski, may I ask the chairman, it's nine o'clock. I think everyone is ready for a 10-minute, 10-minute break. Public, application number 6, 508 Burke LLC, major subdivision 652. We're clearly not going to reach that this evening. Just, I had discussion off the record, both with Mr. Alfieri, who represents that applicant, as well as two members of the public who are here. We would like to reschedule that. Do we have a suggestion from the zoning office?
This is the first.
No.
Here is, we got four books on the 15th.
How is January 19?
Here it is, January 5th.
Do it on the 5th. I don't want to do the 5th because I'm hoping to not be around the beginning of the year.
Oh.
I'm going to try and go south. I don't know if I can, but that's my goal. If you go virtual, then I can go anywhere and do it, but you're going west. The 19th? Is the 19th, Jeff, the next day?
One more, let's see if we got space for you.
Well, that's not a real meeting yet, though, right?
It is.
Okay.
Planning and zoning are different.
Oh, yeah, okay.
We've got four books there, too.
So, members of the public, ladies and gentlemen, application number 6, 508 Burke LLC, major subdivision 652. Lot 36.01, lots 19, 33, 34, 35, and 40. That matter is being carried to the January 19, 2022 meeting. Without the requirement of further notice, the applicant has waived time through January 31, 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's presume our testimony, where were we with?
Cross-examination.
Cross-examination. Please keep your questioning to the planner. Planning, we can't go outside. You don't have the answer, okay? So continue that presentation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Borden, you were involved, were you involved in this project from the very beginning when the application was filed?
Yes.
Did you receive a copy of a letter dated August 8, 2021, from Remington and Vernick, which contained a review letter of the project?
Yes.
Do you have that with you?
I do.
Do you have it before you?
Yes.
Before we get into the heart of it, now, when did you read this letter?
I'm sorry?
When did you first read this letter?
I mean, the letter's dated April 8. I assume I read it within a day or so of receipt, in mid-April.
Other than your testimony here this evening, did you ever attempt to respond to some of the questions that were posed by Remington Vernick in their letter?
I have attempted to respond to all of the issues in the letter through my testimony over the past four hearings.
You're saying that you attempted to respond to all of them, and that'd be your testimony this evening?
Including the testimony at previous meetings.
Okay. Now, on the very first page, it speaks in terms of there being a single-family residence. And there's a note in paragraph 2 where it says, "A use variance is needed with regard to the riding facility." And it says, "It's also noted that only one principal use is permitted in the R5 zone." Now, in fact, there are at least two principal uses on this property, are there not?
Yes.
Now, with regard to the use of the property, and we know what's being advertised, does the applicant intend to have a facility on the site where he would sell equipment for riding?
No.
Sell motorcycles for sale?
No.
Repair motorcycles of other people?
No.
So it's primarily the residence in the house. And how about with regard to the house? Does he also keep all of his business records and have a secretary in the house taking care of that?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Okay, would you agree with me that the proposed use being the trail, that particular lot does not have frontage on Hawken Road, does it?
It does, on Hawken Road, no, but it has front, it has frontage on West Veterans Highway.
You show me where that is, please.
It's shown on the variance plan. It does not show in the red lines on A10.
Where does it have frontage, do you say?
It's shown on the variance plan. I did not prepare this exhibit A10, but it, but it's in generally, there's a flag portion that extends down to veterans in that area. If you look at your variance plan, you will see it. In fact, if you look at the cover sheet, you'll see the little shaded finger that extends to West Veterans.
Is that Lot 13?
Oh, yeah, my eyes.
What is it?
Thank you. Yeah, so the, Ron just blocked me. The finger is this little piece right there. This. And that's part of lot 29.
No, I'm, I apologize. Is that on West Veterans Road? Is that on West Veterans Road?
Yes.
And what is that, that slot number 14?
Well, lot 14 is next to it. It's, it's actually this lot right there. This lot is lot 29 in this corner of the property. The property, you have the cover sheet, Anthony, if you can go back one page, you have the whole scan of the whole thing? There you go. If you could maybe blow up on this area right here, if you don't mind, Anthony.
What, what, what is the width of the lot you're referring to on West Veterans Road?
This, this, this lot is lot 29, and, and the, the finger is an extension of lot 29 that extends out to West Veterans Road.
Show, show me the lot you're referring to.
The little green, the little green.
That little green, that little green strip?
Yes.
And what's the width of that little green strip?
16 feet approximately.
Well, it, it's, it's not sufficient, it's not sufficient to be qualified or counter-qualified as frontage for the lot, is it?
It, it's not frontage that conforms to the ordinance requirements, no.
Pardon me? 16 feet of frontage?
It does not, it does not meet the requirements for frontage.
So you have on West Veterans Road, a partial which is roughly 16 feet wide, which doesn't serve as an ingress or egress or anything, correct?
Well, it, it could serve.
Now, wait a second.
That was a different question.
Does it, does it, does it serve as an ingress or egress on this plan?
On this plan, no, it does not.
Pardon me?
It does, no, it does not.
So you're not seeking to get a plan approved that has an ingress and egress off of West Veterans Road?
No, unless you successfully convince me that you're, you're creating enough trouble with my access to Hawken that I, I put in access there.
But you didn't.
I, we have not proposed that in the interest of, of lessening our, our footprint of this project.
Now, on page three, where it refers to the use, you're saying that a ATV MX riding and training facility is not a permitted use.
That was answered, answered several times.
I'm reading, he has the report in front of him. I'm posing a question to him.
I know, but you asked that question before. We acknowledge it's not a permitted use. That's why before this board and not planning.
Mr. Alfieri, you're really making me lose my train of thought. I was about to pose a question.
That wasn't my intention.
All right, let me go something then that I haven't asked before. Now, this should be the operation of the business, will it not be?
Yes.
And the parties who are going there, they'll be charged a fee for getting instruction and being able to ride on this facility.
They'd be members of this.
I understand they're being members, but will they, will they pay a fee to be a member on whether it be a yearly basis, a monthly basis, similar like?
Yes.
Yeah. What will that fee be?
I don't have any idea.
Will that be a yearly fee, a monthly fee, or a weekly fee?
Not determined yet to my knowledge.
Can anybody just come off the street and say, "I'm going to pay you a fee to be able to ride on this facility for a day"?
Those, the operational testimony was provided many meetings.
But he's still a planner. It's his planning testimony. It's all within the purview of your plan.
The question is that you weren't here when they did the presentation.
Let's assume for the sake of, well, let's assume for the sake of argument that I was not. So what? This witness is before us this evening.
Okay, but we would sustain the objection because he's not here to testify as to the operational process. If you can relate a question to planning, it would be acceptable.
Okay, let's, let's go to page four, where it talks in terms of the variance plan issues. And I know it refers to those issues. Some of them are being referred to the board engineer. But with regard to the questions posed, there's items A through X. Looking at A, you earlier testified that the surrounding land uses with relation to the property, and you also spoke in terms of the anticipated impacts of the proposed use, correct?
Yes.
Is it your testimony that the presence of this commercial use on this property will not have any adverse impact upon the surrounding residential uses?
Yes.
What do you base that opinion upon?
I base that opinion on the noise testimony and the expert report that was presented to the board, as well as the physical attributes of the property and the proposal and the like of impacts.
When people are coming to utilize this facility, will there be bicycles, motorcycles stored on the property? Or must they be brought in on a use on, by way of some type of a trailer being pulled by a vehicle?
There will be no storage on the property, no storage on the property.
And how many, how many motorcycles would you say on a day, on a weekend, on a Saturday, would be utilizing the facilities? Can one come on the property and, and use it all day long? Or would he be there on a narrowly basis?
We, we've already answered that. It's maximum 15 vehicles.
Per day?
No, at any one time.
At any one time.
Well, how many, how many would you anticipate coming there per day on, say, a Saturday or a Sunday?
Personally, I wouldn't expect more than 15, because typically riding is a, is an endeavor that, that, you know, is a social endeavor. So you ride and, and talk and.
Now, can people also come to witness their relatives or whoever it may be riding, or is it just people who will be riding bicycles and perhaps brought there by a father or a brother, if they're underage?
Well, there'd be no spectator events, if that's your question.
Now, when I'm looking at item C, it says the applicant has indicated the activities will include youth and beginner training programs, ASI and MSV training certifications, a controlled riding environment for the borrow pit, guided and unguided wooden trail system, rides on existing trails, and host charity events. Now, what type of host charity events?
I'm going to object. This, all of this operational tend to testimony was hours of, of days of testimony. So he's asking the same questions that the board has heard.
Well, did he earlier testify what the charity events would be?
Mr. Janusa one time did many meetings ago.
All right. Now, let's go, let's go further. Look at item number D. Now, according to this, this facility will be operating seven days a week, including the hours of 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM on Sundays and Saturdays as well. Are you telling me that the operation of this facility on a Sunday with a very, maximum, you say, of 15 motorcycles going around this track will not have an adverse effect both by way of traffic and noise to the surrounding property owners, residential property owners?
Yes.
Okay. It also says testimony should be provided regarding the need for a site plan approval for the project, should the use variance be granted. Is it your testimony as a planner that with regard to this project, the construction of a house, the use of the pole barn, the facilities for onsite parking, the porta, porta potties, as well as whatever's being done to the trails, that a site plan is not required under the zoning ordinance in Jackson?
In, in my opinion, it's not required, but that is the perusal of the board.
Yeah, and just to elaborate on that, we did indicate a, a prior meeting that if the board wanted a site plan and a separate site plan application.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mr.
The board, we did stipulate at an earlier meeting that if the board felt a site plan was necessary, then we would request that the board act on the use and we would come back bifurcated with site plan. That's, we, but we left that to the discretion of the board.
Well, Mr. Mr. Board, you're, you're an experienced planner, correct? Did you make a request from the zoning officer to inquire of him whether or not a site plan was necessary?
Uh, no.
Well, he has a jurisdiction to answer that question, doesn't he?
I believe not. It's the jurisdiction of this board who's here in the variance application.
I think when we got to G, you indicated that at present, as the flag portion is shown, at present, there is no intended use of that property, correct?
Correct.
Now, when we refer to the plan shows a portable restroom facility, can you tell me with regard to that, how many facilities will be present within that restroom facility?
I, I believe we proposed a single porta jona.
A single porta jona?
Yes.
With one facility?
One facility.
With at least, since you're having people who are under 16 coming there, they'd have to come with an adult, that's 30 people, plus the staff and everyone else. You're going to have one facility for probably over 40 people. You think that's adequate?
I'm sure that my client will provide additional facilities if they feel they're needed at any given time.
Now, with regard to these vehicles, for example, will they all be responsible for bringing their own fuel? In other words, if they bring the motorcycle, presumably it's gassed up, they ride it all day. They'll bring other types of containers or whatnot?
Mr. Janusa described in detail how all that operational fueling, et cetera, would take place.
Now, have you made a determination? Since we're talking in terms of at least, at least 15 cars in addition to 15 motorcycles, how many, how many parking, how many parking units or parking stalls have you provided?
The, referring to the variance plan, there's an area adjacent to the pit that is an open area with scattered trees that, that.
How many, how many stalls?
You could fit 15 cars and trailers in there.
Well, that area be paved or lined, or it'll just be gravel?
In, in its existing condition.
What, what is the, when you say existing position, there's not, they're not parking 15 cars there right now, are they?
Well, you could, you could.
But you're not, you haven't, you haven't prepared a site plan to show that?
I believe we've shown that on the variance plan. That was one of the requests of the board engineer to show, illustrate how those would fit there, and we.
And now going, going further into the earlier issue with regard to the uses, if you look at number W, it goes on to say that if the use is approved, a condition of the use should be that the applicant would be required to consolidate the existing lots.
Correct.
Okay. So if in fact you follow that, that would automatically mean that you would have two, at least two uses on one lot, and you would not have sufficient frontage for the rear lot.
If they're consolidated, then they would have frontage.
You might, you might have that.
So the question's withdrawn.
Now, they then go on to list on the page five, the variances and waivers, and it says clearly here on paragraph one of the. I'm sorry. It says, I should, I should be the one to be getting criticized for not speaking up when I, I can't hear my name being called. Thank you. So the applicant shall provide special reasons testimony regarding the proposed use. Can you, can you list the special reasons which you feel justify the granting of this use variance?
Again, it's up to the board, but he testified specifically as to what those special reasons were, the purposes of zoning, et cetera. So I don't know if you have a.
Well, my, my, my recollection is all he said was, it was particularly suitable, nothing else.
I, I would overrule that. It's cross-examination.
Go ahead.
He asked a question.
Yeah, what, what, what are the special reasons which you believe are being given or advocated with regard to this proposed use? What are those specific special reasons?
What we, I identified in my testimony, five special reasons under the five purposes of zoning that are applicable to this project, in my opinion. It was A, C, G, I, and J. And I, I had given a more comprehensive description of each of those in my direct testimony earlier tonight.
What was the last one?
J.
Tell me, tell me if you can, how the placement of this facility on this property is good for the general welfare of the surrounding residential property owners?
Because this use maintains a light air and open space by the fact that there is no development proposed. There is no tree removal, there is no impervious coverage, there's no increased stormwater runoff, there's no increased traffic as would be generated by a conforming 11 or 12 lot development. There's no groundwater withdrawal as would be required for 11 or 12 wells or groundwater impacts as would be required from 11 or 12 septic systems. And as evidenced by the noise study, which is, I think, the primary concern about a potential negative impact on neighbors, there is no negative impact.
I want to get through this, so I just really have only one more question. On page seven, the comment from Mr. Peters is, "Applicant has not provided justification for the approvals required." And then he says, "Applicant is asked to address these issues within the context of the requirements for the relief detailed above." And you, you believe that, you've done that?
Yes.
My understanding is that there are three ways in which one can seek justification for the granting of a D variance, and one is that the use is inherently beneficial. You would agree with me, would you not, that this use is not inherently beneficial?
Yes.
That then leads us to the next two, and you've given, you've, you've said that you believe that you have shown that the site is particularly suited for a use, showing that the municipality will benefit from the placing of the building where it is proposed, despite the fact that the local zoning ordinance prohibits that use in that particular location. Please tell me how you believe that the municipality as a whole will benefit from this racetrack use.
It's not a racetrack.
So objection as to the characterization, but your attorney has directed you to answer.
I, 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 I mean, that would require the repeat of all my entire testimony, so.
Just summarize it.
Tell me, tell me how the municipality will benefit.
The municipality benefits because this site is, we advance a general welfare, welfare because this site is particularly suitable to this use as in all of the requirements or all the, the suitable location, nature of the property, the location of the property, the impacts created by the property, the use limitations we've applied to the property.
Now, let me, that leaves the remaining standard perhaps, which would be that if in fact the applicant has not granted this variance, he would suffer an undue hardship. That also is not applicable to. he would suffer undue hardship. That also is not applicable to this matter, is it?
No, it's not.
So we really are just left with one. And that goes into the special reasons which you believe you satisfy.
That's correct.
Just a little, hold on one second. Yeah, we have this marked as, oh, one, please.
It may have previously marked as well, but that's okay.
We may have marked that brochure, but I don't...
It's all right, we'll mark it separately.
We'll mark it separately.
Okay, now, I thought the brochure was marked. What I've really done is isolated one photograph, two that has marked it as a one. And I believe it's a photograph of Mr. Janusa. If you could look at that and identify the type of bike it is.
Yes.
What is it?
I'm sorry?
What kind of bike is it?
Oh, that's a, I believe that's a four hundred and fifty cc ATV.
And this is the type of activity, or this is the type of riding which will take place on the subject site?
That's the type of riding that would occur potentially within the activity. That's, which, again, remember, is only one-third of the activity that we're proposing.
And you're telling me that that type of use is something which serves as a benefit to the municipality as a whole?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
That closes our presentation, Mr. Chair.
Any board members have any questions? All right, so I'm gonna open it now to the public, general public. Anybody want to come forward and speak on the discussion between the two professionals that you heard this afternoon?
Sir, before I swear in, just as the chairman alluded to, you have a right to question the two witnesses you heard, to make comments about the overall, and/or to make comments about the overall plan. All right, sir, so if you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, thank you, tallest guy there, solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address?
My name's Jesse Brennan, B-R-E-N-N-A-N. I'm not a Jackson resident, but I live right in New Egypt.
Okay, what's the address?
Fifteen Tall Timber Lane in New Egypt.
Thank you.
I'm talking on behalf of Facility Two, and I'm in favor of it. I have some talking points real quick. Now, I've lived at my residence since September two thousand seventeen, and I think, I believe the Janusa's acquired this at some time in twenty twenty, last year. Since I've lived there, I'm only about three-tenths of a mile away from his property. My properties are only about, I'm in northeast, so I'm just three-tenths of a mile north of them. I just wanted to touch on the noise conversation here. And just in general, bikes are always, have been a noise in my town and all around my property and everything. But I can notice a significant amount of less noise since Mr. Janusa and the family have procured this land. There's a lot less bikes on the roads as a result, because I believe the pit that they acquired was a destination spot. So a lot of people reside from a lot of areas from around and kind of conjoin here. And it happened to be a lot of underage people would be riding on the roads. And, you know, they're obviously not trying to get caught by cops and stuff like that. So they're trying to get to their destination as quick as possible, which causes them to go ripping up the hard roads quite frequently. And that's dangerous. I've seen much less of that. Also, I live in a log home, which, contrary to what most people may believe, is barely any noise barrier. I can hear anything. I can hear my neighbor, three houses down, cough. And I used to get woken up in the middle of the night because there would be people out in the pit trespassing, having bonfires, drinking, carrying on. And a lot of times they used to do burnouts right on Hawkins Road, right in front of there. And they used to do fireworks and stuff a lot like that. They used to wake me up. And I can't say that I've been woken up in my own house in, you know, a long time, not that I can remember. It's also my understanding that he's going to start like a training and a beginner's class at this place, which is something that I've always had interest in getting. I have a year and a half old son right now. We have another child on the way. And it's always something I was very interested in getting involved in, and considering he's a professional. He knows how to do everything safely. He could be a very good mentor and guide for a teacher, for all that type of thing. If it's okay with you, my brother, he's actually next door neighbors to this property. He couldn't make it tonight, and I'd like to speak on his behalf. He gave me something, if that's okay?
It's not.
It's not okay? Okay. I'm gonna do it anyway. No, I'm just kidding. But, I mean, that's about anything that I can give up right now. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'd love to answer a question. Yeah, I like it. I like the idea of it over there.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask him a question?
Yes, James.
How far away do you live from the site, the site bits in question?
I looked on an app, I kind of measured the distance. It's a little less than three-tenths of a mile.
Okay.
It's like five hundred yards.
Did you testify that you can hear the noise from the pit at three o'clock in the morning that woke you up?
Prior to them owning it.
Well, I know that, but you did hear noise.
Like explosions from fireworks and stuff like that. Yep.
I have a question, if I may. Good evening, Mr. Brennan. You testified that prior, you did hear, in fact, noise coming from the pit. I take it that'd be the noise from motorcycles and things such as what the applicant's proposing, correct?
Yeah, I could hear sometimes.
It's my understanding, you also said that as of late, you've heard no noise.
I haven't heard nearly as much noise. I can't say I haven't heard no noise, but...
It's my understanding that the applicant does not have an approval to operate this facility. So therefore, there's no vehicles or motorcycles or the like coming onto the property. That's why he's here. Now, if you heard noise before...
I have to object to the question because it's not an accurate representation of what testimony took place previously. Mr. Janusa testified that he and his friends ride there regularly. He also trains there.
Okay, that's, whatever those number of people are, fine. I have no further questions.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I want to come forward, have a question to these professionals. Come on up. You want to make a general statement?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, if you have them, or comments that you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir. Give us, please, your full names, spell your last, and your address.
Eugene Rosinski, one hundred and ten Leanne Drive. Okay, just as that gentleman said, now, he doesn't live, this is in my backyard, this proposed thing here. And he heard. The reason you don't hear them now is they don't live there yet. I mean, I walk by her every day with the dog. My wife goes by. The gate's closed. There's been nobody there. They come maybe once a week. From what I understand, they don't have the certificate of occupancy. So there's been nobody there. It's been really nice and quiet. Saturday morning, they were there. We heard bikes out there riding around. And this is, like it was brought up, it's a residential zone. Now, as far as I know, there isn't any, there might be two or three places in the whole state of New Jersey where you can legally ride an ATV in a dirt bike. Chadworth used to have a place, and they shut that down. And I think that it's a really wrong thing to open this up in Jackson, especially in a residential zone. Now, like I said, look into it. I don't think there's anywhere you can legally ride in the state, and they know that. Also, he was talking about the size of the machines. Sure, you can hit sixty miles an hour on a paved road, but you're in a dirt bike. When you nail that on a dirt bike or a quad, that tire is spinning to dirt. Your RPMs go sky high, and you don't really fly until finally, you know, when the dirt, you know, when you get up to some speed. But you can rev that engine high as hell, and the dirt sits flying off the tire before you actually take off. Now, I worked shift work my whole life. And I enjoyed coming home and being able to open the windows and sleep during the day and not hear the bikes back there. Every once in a while, you would, but they weren't there all the time. If they're gonna run this operation from nine to six, seven days a week, you're not even gonna be able to open the windows. And every day, you're gonna know that from nine to six, there's gonna be noise back there. There's gonna be dirt bikes, and you can hear them. And like I said, as far as I know, there's nowhere in the state. I think Jackson, in a residential zone, isn't a place to be opening up a dirt bike track. So anyway, like I said, how, okay, when the board members went to visit, they were talking, they heard, you know, they heard the cars on Hawkins Road. Now, how would you like to hear dirt bikes every day? Would you want to hear that every single day? You visited it. You were there for maybe, I don't know, an hour, two hours. You were talking, you went home. But every day, would you want to wake up knowing that from nine to six, you're gonna have these things in your backyard flying around, and you can't even have it quiet? Think about it, you know? That's about all I've got to say.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else want to come up? Oh, we got time here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions directed to any parties will be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name and spell your last?
Sure. My name is Paul, last name is Nev Leoni. M is in Michael, E is in Victor, O, G-L-I-O-N-I.
And your address, please, sir.
One zero six Leanne Drive in Jackson. Just several points. Several of the board members did say that they had visited a house on Leanne Drive. Leanne Drive, if anyone's familiar, or if not familiar, it goes up into the left. They didn't indicate what address on Leanne Drive they were at. I'd like to know where that was, only because, not because I care about the neighbors letting you on the property, but because, again, the road curves off to the left, which means the noise is gonna be different at one oh six as opposed to one twenty. Okay, if you don't have that, I'll just continue, if that's okay, unless they do have it. At one hundred, on the corner.
One oh six, corrected.
Wasn't it one oh six? That's my house.
So you're in the vicinity of, you're around between one oh eight and one twelve.
Okay. Was brought up before, well, first of all, the noise issue, of course, that's obviously is the biggest issue we have in the neighborhood. Someone had brought up Central Jersey Rifle and Pistol Club, just as a point of reference. They open at seven AM in the morning. Of course, the range from the military base is fairly close, too, so we really can't tell the difference sometimes. However, they do close at sundown, so there's not a lot of noise after that. I know this operation will go from nine to six, so that really doesn't come into play too much. But in terms of Central Jersey, they do have a limited time as to when the outdoor range is open as well. The other question I have is, I apologize for not knowing which person brought it up this evening. It was brought up that in terms of the vehicles on the property, there were gonna be non-modified vehicles. However, from my understanding is that people are gonna bring their own ATVs and bikes in on their own trailers. And my question is, who's to say that those vehicles coming in are not gonna be modified with louder pipes?
I can answer that question.
Sure. No, I apologize. I came late to the game, and I do apologize. Okay.
And that there would always be one supervisor who's either employed or Mr. Janusa or his family on site at any time there's an activity that occurs?
Okay, and again, I apologize for not being here at the last meeting. I do apologize. Okay, but again, you know, the question has risen, and I'm sure that, you know, you've heard it over and over and over again. I do apologize. I'm gonna repeat it again. The noise, nine to six, Monday through Sunday, in a residential neighborhood, that's zoned for residential, we do have noise sometimes. There are people in the neighborhood that have quads and ATVs. If you've been over that way any day of the week, sometimes they're going, sometimes they're not. They do shut down at reasonable hours. You know, we have other activities going on, but we also have family outings, picnics in the backyard, barbecues, things like that. And honestly, we don't want to hear ATVs seven days a week in the back. You know, it's a residential zone, and we live in that area. And I've only lived in Jackson for the last, I'll say, since two thousand and eleven. And you can figure out the math from there. My wife's been there for over twenty-five years. It's a beautiful area. It's a beautiful town. And that end of town, that area, is probably the nicest area because it's not developed. It's not commercial. We all live in a nice residential area, except for, you know, occasional noise. It's a quiet area, and we would really, honestly, like to keep it that way. I understand that. But again, we live in the neighborhood. We're there every seven days a week. The sound professional's there one day. There is noise. We understand that. But we don't want to have to deal with all this noise seven days a week. Thank you. Right now, there's hardly any noise because there's not a whole lot of activity back there. Well, not hearing anything right now is an improvement. We still, you know, as I said, we have neighbors who have ATVs, and we hear them. And, you know, they do ride up and down the street sometimes safely. Maybe it's not the safest thing in the world. Drug use in the back, all that garbage in the back, you know. Obviously, cleanup is always a benefit. Our concern is the noise, and our concern is down the road with a commercial industry there. There's one, obviously, this gentleman's business, which is, you know, a business. And again, ATVs are gonna be back there as they were before, only legally now. I understand that. There was another business back there that had the, right outside the easement road, or should I say, past the easement, there's a road on Leanne Drive. easement, there's a road on Leanne Drive, you know, that runs, runs parallel. There was a business there, and that was, they were trying to zone that as commercial, and it got shot down by the board. And we don't want to see that one come back up and have two commercial properties going on there. What happens to the, what happens to the values of our properties? You have two commercial businesses there. My understanding, and I, this is secondhand knowledge, so I apologize, is that the person who's going to buy the house next door to us backed out of the deal when they found out there was a commercial property behind us. Now, that house is sold, finally, from what I understand, but, you know, the next house that sells, is the property value going to be there, or is it not going to be there? This is the concern that we have. It's going to be a commercial property, and who's going to buy the houses if they know there's a commercial property? It has to be disclosed when the house is sold. Who's going to want it? I mean, it's just, you know, if you move into a property, and they build a Walmart behind you, your house, your house value goes down the drain. I know this is not a Walmart, so, you know, I'm not trying to compare, it's not apples to apples. But the point is that the residential neighborhood, not only mine, which directly butts up to the easement, and then the road, and then this other property, but the house across the street from me, if my value goes down, his value is going to go down. If his value goes down, the value on the next block over is going to go down, because you have commercial properties going. I ask that the board please consider the residence of the neighborhood in that area, because that's, this is not a benefit to us. This is a detriment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments related to this application and directed to the board, or the, or these witnesses will be the truth, whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address.
My name is Cynthia Rosinski, R O S I N S K I, and I live at 110 Leanne Drive, Jackson. I only have two issues that I want to talk about. I want to address your issues about the statement of the difference in sound and everything before all this happened. I've lived there 32 years. Yes, back then, you would hear all, like, sounds every so often with quads and things like that, but it was only for a short time. You're talking about now a business from nine to six every day? Plus, when you, board people went there, I don't know, I mean, they were riding around, the noise level was done and everything else, but was that actually the way they were going to do it? That's the way you saw them do it? I don't know. Those are my only two issues I want to talk about.
Anybody else want to come up, public?
Thank you, sir, for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to relate to the board, or to the professionals here, who represent the truth, whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Anthony LaFonte, L A F O N T E, 109 Leanne Drive. And I have to agree with my neighbors here. I mean, I've lived there 26 years. We've had our ups and downs with noise and sound, but it's occasionally, on the weekend, once in a while. I mean, we have people that work shift work, we have people that are having babies. You're going to have noise from nine hours, seven days a week. I don't know if people have ever been to any of these races, Raceway Park, but when these guys get on it to go over hills and, and just race, 15 bikes on a 60-acre plotland? I don't know about that. It might be 15 now, but as soon as it opens up, it could be 40 or 50. And these bikes running around with modified mufflers, and aftermarket mufflers, it's just, it just doesn't make sense. How do you know that? You got an advanced course where people are going to race. Race dirt bikes have aftermarket pipes on it. Dirt bikes that by themselves are loud enough, just stock.
So what would happen in that case, and the board hasn't acted yet, the applicant has stipulated that they, it would, if the applicant would not permit bikes on that site with these aftermarket mufflers. So, let me give you an, by way of example, but not limitation. If, for instance, one day, you hear outrageous noise, and you call code enforcement, and they go out, and they look at the result, if this was approved, and they go out, and they have that resolution in front of them, and it says, no aftermarket, and they say, stop everything. Let me see each of those 15 bikes. And if two of them have aftermarket mufflers, they get cited.
Who's going, who's going to say that there's going to be 15 bikes there? Who's going to?
So that's, okay, that's the same, I'm just trying to explain
No, I got you.
the process. So that is similar. I believe there was testimony, Mr. Borden said there would be only 15 in one day. I think there were two shifts, though.
Potentially, yes.
So
Fifteen at any one time.
Any one time, up to 30 in one day.
Sure, 30, 40, or 15?
No, no, no. It is true, and I, and I'm jumping ahead, because I'm trying to assist to your, to the enforcement question, at least. Mr. Borden misspoke. Mr. Alfieri was going to tell us that he misspoke, because that was a clear representation already. There was a maximum of 30 bikes on that site, in two 15 shifts. So, but to your specific question, if you call it, I'm making this point up to make, story up to make my point. You call at 11 o'clock, and there's, and they go out there, and there's 16 bikes, bikes there, running, they stop it, they're in violation, they get, they get a summons. That's how, I mean, in general, from 30,000 feet, that's how enforcement works.
And who do we call? Do we call
Code enforcement.
The police, or?
Or, or the police. And, and our zoning officer shaking his head, yes.
I just don't get how it's going to be regulated, that's all. Because, once those doors open and people come in there, it's going to be just like a circus. I mean, it's like camping out at Raceway Park. I don't know if you guys have ever been to races, or race, motocross races, quads, that'll be running with mufflers, that'd be crazy. I mean, it just makes no sense. I really don't get it. But, uh,
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody want to come up and speak?
Thank you, sir, for coming up. Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board, or ask of the professionals who represent the truth, whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir. Can you give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Sure. My name is Rich, last name is Trevelisse. It's T R E V E L I S E. I am from Howell, not near the facility, but just want to
But that's okay, what you're adding.
I'm sorry?
What is your add?
I'm sorry.
What is your address?
Address 283 Newton's Corner Road, Howell. So, I am the motocross race manager at Raceway Park. Also involved with the AMA, American Motorcyclist Association. I'm on the commission for motocross. So I'm, I'm pretty involved in, when I heard about this, I was pretty interested, that's why I wanted to come by. I am in support of it. I know, potentially, there's issue with noises. There always is. But I think with the environment that is being put down here, it's not as extravagant as it may be portrayed, especially the training side of it. Training side of it, a rider may be riding that bike for maybe 50% of the time, versus, you know, somewhere where they're riding it all the time. It's like half instruction and half on the bike. So it's a little bit of both. So it's not going to be constant riding on, on that track for training. It's more education and explaining to the riders on how to ride, to make it fun for them. That's what really this is all about. I started to ride when I was 13 years old, and that was at Camp Zender in Wall, it's YMCA camp. And back then, they had mini bike classes to teach people how to ride. The American Honda Motor Company backed it up. I'm almost 60 years old, and I still love it today.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt for a minute?
Go ahead, James.
My question is, is he here as, is he here as a witness on behalf of the applicant? He's not a, he's not a Jackson resident. I don't know how close he is to even his property, and he's here in favor of it, talking about, of course, in Old Bridge, I'm just curious as to what his purpose is here. I don't want to confuse this record, because I know, you know, depending on how we decide, this may go someplace, and somebody's going to have to look at this record.
I would like to say that I'm here on behalf of motorcycling in general. I said, when the AMA commissioned, I go to tracks all over the country.
Sir, I understand that. The point is, I'm trying to avoid a problem here. The point is, you know, are you, in quotes, an interested party?
No, not whatsoever. I'm running an actual track, so it's kind of competition. Okay, thank you. Well, I just wanted to state that, and that's all I have.
I know of no basis. You don't have to be a resident to participate publicly. The board can judge whether he's sounding that way, in my, in my opinion, anyway.
That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
But wait, did you have it?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Sir?
Being that you have this background of, at Raceway Park, what other, you know, Mr. Gertner talked about enforcement and who they would call, what other possible protections could they put in place, or enforcement could they put in place to assure their neighbors?
Well, they have it fenced in, they have it secured. If, I rode in that place at like 1981, so it's a kind of past memory for me. I haven't been there. But I know it, from what I remember, was sunk in a little bit, is, you know, if somebody's training, they've got to be educated themselves to teach these riders how to ride. It's a controlled environment, as opposed to somebody going out to a pit down the road, or out somewhere else where it's
I'm going to object to this testimony. He's really testifying as, almost purporting to be an expert witness, referring to something that he was at the site 40 years ago. He can make, he can make his comments, yeah, I'm for it, or I'm against it, but what he's doing is just beyond the pale, as far as I'm concerned.
Except, except he was finished, and he was responding to a question, so it's not as if he offered that testimony.
It's okay. If I could just finish by saying, you know, the control of it in there, I know people ride all over the place. It's a controlled place for people to go, where I think I heard somebody say it was going to be supervised, where a lot of times, people go off in other places, they're unsupervised, and anything can happen. There, it's at least controlled where there's some safety involved.
I have, I have a question of this witness, this, this party.
Can't object to his testimony and then ask him a question, can you?
I have a question of him.
Yes.
And I, and I appreciate your comments. I understand your comments. I rode, I rode myself as well a long, long time ago. And you've heard testimony to the effect that the trail bikes they're proposing to use is 450 cc's.
Correct.
That's a relatively large trail bike, is it not?
It would be a, a large, or the largest sized dirt bike, basically.
Okay. Is it noisy?
Uh, can be.
Can be. When you say can be, that means if you are accelerating, or whatever it may be, it's noisy, correct?
To a point, but again, from the sound expert, there is a little
I don't care about the sound expert, I'm asking you. You've talked about your, your association with Raceway Track and whatnot.
Right.
It is a 450 cc trail bike, can it be noisy?
Anything can be noisy. They shift, so that's when it goes up and down, up and down.
Now, if you had 15 of those out on that track at the same time, could that be very noisy?
Depends on how they're running, depends on the level of the rider.
Let me ask you this question. Would you want to own a residence next to the Freehold Raceway Track?
This is not Freehold Raceway. Can you ask, can you ask him if he would live next to this? That would probably be more relevant.
I had no further questions.
I, I would, but I'm an enthusiast, so I don't know if it would apply.
All right. So, thank you, sir. Just to
You're welcome.
clarify some of the legal point. If I wasn't clear, it's, it's, I'll take it. So, I've generally taken the position that these are public hearings, and that the broad definition of interested parties is such that it makes it difficult just to cut someone off. But to Mr. Hurley's general point, I just want to, I'll, I use the book to articulate better than I do off the top of my head sometimes. So, to the point of the distance from, from the site, this is from Cox 182.2, "Board should be aware that although the right to be heard may be broad and reach persons whose property is relatively remote from the property, the weight to be accorded their recitation of the effects should generally be inverse to the distance to that property." So the board can take note of the fact that he's in Howell. The board can take note and weigh what he said as an example, to the fact that he has some level of professional association to the type of business, and determined based on the fact that he came and made that, can relay what level of weight or credibility they desire, based on whatever his argument was. Hope I clarified that, but maybe I mixed people up.
All right. You coming up?
Have to follow Mr. Gertner's comments there.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your full name, please, spell your last and your address.
Richard Schmidt, last name S C H M I D, like David, T like Thomas, at 502 Amsterdam Avenue, Bayville, New Jersey. Bayville, New Jersey, correct. So, yes, Bayville, I am not a local Jackson resident. However, I am here in support of the application. I myself, similar to Mr. Janus, have been offering off-road vehicle rider training since 1993. So it has been a few years, and I would like to mention a few things that I heard in the duration of the evening. There were some comments with regards to engine sizes, and yes, 450 cc's is pretty much the largest size off-road vehicle. There were some comments with regards to street bikes. Street bikes can triple the size. So, larger size, typically larger bikes. I just wanted to mention that oftentimes on the street, you'll hear street riders with a saying, "Straight pipes save lives." They want loud bikes. We don't want loud bikes off-road. Oftentimes, those loud pipes that save lives on the street are what we call straight pipes, meaning there's no silencer. What's a silencer? Silencer on an off-road vehicle does just that. It silences the bike, it quiets the bike down. It makes it not as loud as those obnoxious street bikes that we hear on the road. So, I'd like to ask the team, are silencers going to be required at this facility? And will there be any vehicles allowed at this facility with straight pipes without silencers? To the noise professional, I was having a hard time seeing from where I was sitting, but the four stations, are they located on the property line? Okay, so 200 feet from the property line. So all the noise levels that were recorded are actually closer inside the property than to the property line. Is it safe to then say hypothetically, the noise levels at any of the receiver's property lines would be less than what you testified and recorded this evening?
You have, you got to use a mic.
Yes.
Okay, and can you confirm that both the Noise Control Act of New Jersey and Jackson's local nor, local noise ordinance does in fact allow for a DBA of up to 65?
During the daytime hours, yes.
Okay, and this facility will only operate during daytime hours?
That's my understanding.
And during the entire duration of your tests, the average noise level was within the legal parameters of both local and state guidelines?
Correct.
Okay. So then, if this is the case, it appears as though noise limits would be conforming?
Yes.
Okay. Only other thing as I heard tonight that I wanted to possibly make a recommendation, I heard that bikes are only to be stock. Personally, I don't think that's necessarily a good thing. I think it would be personally, in my opinion, better required to have silencers on all vehicles. Best way to kind of explain that, driving down the road, you might drive a Honda Accord, nice and quiet, you stop at a traffic light, the Honda Accord, same year, make and model right next to you is loud and obnoxious. Sometimes kids want them to be loud. That's not our goal as trainers, that's not what is going to be, in my opinion, looked for here, rather than downplaying modified vehicles. Sometimes aftermarket exhausts can be quieter than stock exhausts, so I don't think that a modified vehicle is naturally, is naturally a detriment. I think personally, as board, you would be better off requiring silencers as opposed to requiring stock vehicles. And again, I'm just sharing with you my opinion.
Thank you. Your recommendation is logged and noted, thank you.
Yep, that's all I have for you. Thank you.
Anybody else want to come forward?
Sir.
Sorry.
Hi, I have a question.
Sure.
As a trainer, would you, what type of vehicle would you start somebody on? Would you start them on a same size vehicle?
Uh, no, that would certainly depend on their age and size.
So, a typical, say 10-year-old, what type of vehicle would they begin training with?
Each manufacturer has a recommendation. Most dealers are not allowed to sell you a vehicle of a certain CC based on your age. So, for example, if you mentioned 10 years old, you would probably be on anywhere from a 70 to 90 cc ATV.
And how long would a typical lesson last for a child that age? How long could they?
There's different types of training, you know, we can do private training where it's hourly, you know, you can do semi-private training where it's maybe a half day, or sometimes full day, there's.
But realistically, how long could a child last on a, doing that with the grips and everything? I would imagine that would get tiring for a child.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's courses that are full day. I, I taught motocross schools in 32 states, we did 2,500 students a year, we did full day schools, start at nine o'clock and go to five o'clock. Again, it's not riding all day long, it's, you know, first explain how it's done, make sure, you know, the student understands what they're supposed to do, demonstrate, you know, some people like to hear how it's done, some people like to see how it's done. You do a demonstration, they, they hear it, they see it, and then it's their turn. They demonstrate, or they perform whatever technique we're working on, and give them some feedback, and this, and this was, you did this correctly, let's work on this and this. So, it's not just riding all day long, there's a lot of instruction, there's a lot of, I won't call it downtime, but, you know, technique involved, instruction involved, that they're not riding the entire time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Either of the attorneys have questions, or is John?
All right, so it's running late. Thank you very much, sir. So, it's running late, if you don't have anything additional to add, and you've made your comment, I would ask you not to come up. You got one more? All right, one more, come on up.
Thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the information, questions, comments, or testimony about to present before the board represent the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You give us your full name, spell your last and your address.
My name is Rich Trevelisse Jr., Trevelisse, T.R.E.V.E.L.I.S.E. I also resided 283 Newton's Corner Road over in Howell, New Jersey. Now, although I don't live near the applicant on question here, I, alongside my dad, helped manage Raceway Park there for that race side. I just wanted to make.
So, I'm gonna actually, you know, we've heard that piece of the testimony.
I understand that, sir. I just wanted to.
You're repeating the testimony? I, we appreciate you, you're appearing, but we're gonna.
Just wanted to touch on the time aspect. Okay.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, so.
No, sir, you've had your shot.
No, thank you. I'm gonna close public session at this juncture. Thank you. Okay, so we've heard from both attorneys, is there a closing statement?
Yes, I'm sorry, I'll be very brief.
Excuse me, excuse me, do we know whether or not the objector has any witnesses?
Do you have any witnesses tonight? Just a few quick points, just because it's gone on through several meetings, and I just want to focus the board on what we think are the most important points. First, as you heard, the property was used illegally forever, the neighbors acknowledged that there's been an improvement since my clients come there, they fenced it, they cleaned it, they controlled it. Number two is Mr. Janusa and his friends can ride there, they can train there, they can do whatever they want, as long as they don't exceed the sound ordinance, they could have as many bikes and as much activity and then, at any time that they want, and there's no controls. The third point is that we've agreed that we would address any of the technical comments that the board professionals had, we also would defer to the board where if the board felt that the application should be bifurcated and we come back for site plan, we would certainly do that if there were issues that are site plan related. Two site visits took place by the board members, and the reviews and comments that came back were extremely positive, and I think that it was very helpful for the board members to understand, because it's a huge property and it's hard to understand unless you're there and you see the activity and you see the scope of the project, of the property. The board asked for a ski slope map, if you will, we provided that, it shows you exactly where the activity is going to be and what type of activity will take place. The, we agreed to comply and live with that, that's, and Mr. Gertner said they needed some plan on site, on record at the town, so that if there was ever a deviation, we can all go back and say, this is what was approved, and you can't exceed that, the, the area, the scope, et cetera. No clearing of trees, everything's located within existing tracks, there will always be site, onsite supervision. The perimeter's track, if you will, of that ski slope, which is closest to the properties, the outside properties, we had stipulated would only be used for ownership and staff, it would not be used for racing, training, et cetera. And speaking of racing, it's not a racetrack, some people have referred to it racetrack, Raceway Park has really no, no relationship to something like this. This is for training only, and for a club, if you will. And we, we called it a business, we called it a club, it's a small business that Mr. Janusa wants to run at this site, there'll be no more than 15 vehicles on site at any one time. You heard that there'll be no more than two shifts, if you will, if, if that even happens, it's by appointment only, it's on specific times and dates that, that have to be arranged through the Janusa family to come on site. It's also weather permitting, so it's not something that happens in the rain or the snow or anything, because it has to be decent conditions. We've agreed to the stock muffler, we also agree we have no issue with silencers. I don't know what they are, but I asked Mr. Janusa, and he said he has no issue with silencers. You know, we, we talked about the hours of operation we've agreed to limit, the intensity we've agreed to limit, and then the only other point is that, and, and it was the legal point, when people from Howell and other towns were testifying, and you add certain weight to the people, especially if they live in another town, the objector six and a half miles away has, this has no impact on the objector. We, although I know the reason why he's objecting, which I won't repeat, it makes no sense why this person, this company would object to this application. The residents 100% understand their concerns, and we've hoped we've addressed them, but in terms of the objector, we think it, although he has the right to object, we think it really has no impact on the Clayton family and the Clayton business. And having said all of that, we'd requested the board act favorably on the application.
In closing, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Alfieri referred to whom I represent, and I'm not gonna get into that, but this matters before you, for a use variance, to operate a facility, they will be operating seven days a week, and the purpose of the facility is to have numerous motorcycles going around this track seven days a week, eight or 10 hours a day. Now, I've been doing this for a long time, I've never seen an application come before a board for a use variance without there being a request or a demand for a site plan as well. In some instances, the application is bifurcated. In other words, an application for a use variance is granted, but it's subject to there being a site plan which is submitted. And I would suggest to you that in this particular case, a site plan, apart from everything else, would be necessary. There is not a layout of this particular project showing the topos, showing the safety, the various trails, it's absolutely nothing. And look at what we're talking about. We're talking about a residential area where the property in question is surrounded by residential uses. Whoever are residents of this municipality and buying in this area, we have to assume that they were aware of the fact that it was a residential area, so they made a significant investment in purchasing a home in that area. And they really look to the municipality as well as to this board for protection, because most people who live in Jackson are people of modest means. These are modest houses, but these houses are very important to them, you know, a man's house is his castle. So, what they're doing here today, in coming to speak against this, and you'll notice that no one who lives adjacent to this property came and spoke in favor of it, we've got, I'm sorry?
No, excuse me.
Who's this guy?
That's out of order.
Who is this gentleman?
I have no idea.
Okay, having said that, now, and I listened to the comment.
Sir, one more outburst and you're out the door. You're, one more outburst, you're out the door, you're mouthing, I saw it.
Are we all set? You know, I've listened to some comments from the board members saying, if there's a violation, let's say for example, if there are more than 15 trail bikes on the site, if there is noise which have exceeded the limitations placed by the ordinance, well, you can make a complaint to the town for enforcement. Now, most of you have been on this board for many, many years, and you know what happens when you make a complaint. Someone goes out to warn the fellow, he says, "I'm not exceeding the noise limits I don't like." So, once an approval is given to this particular application, it's here to say, you're not gonna reinvent the wheel with regard to this. What strikes me most of all, why is it that people who are gainfully employed, working for a living, working five days a week, as this gentleman said, he comes home from work, he hears a noise, on a Saturday and Sunday, particularly Sunday, which is a day of rest, they have to listen to this noise? Because this gentleman wants to operate a facility like this. I mean, tell me, we're in Jackson township, someone looking for a use variance would come into a area which is a zone residential and put this type of use, with this type of noise, with this type of environmental concerns, be granted a use variance. When I first looked at this case, which was within the last 24 hours, I said to myself, how could anyone possibly be seeking to put a use such as this in a residential zone? It just is unfathomable. So, I would urge you to give great thought to this, think of yourself as a person who is living immediately adjacent to the site, what would your response to this application be? Thank you.
Reach out to the press, if you have any insight. I don't have anything else to add that I've already, beyond what I've already stated, unless there's any questions the board members have from me.
You're up. You have a question?
I have a comment.
Okay, I love comment.
My car's gonna turn into a pumpkin. It's getting late, you know, I, I hope we're not gonna make a decision this evening, because there's a lot of meetings here that we have notes that I would love to review, and I want to consider the testimony that's been presented today, and I learned a long time ago, never make a decision when you're tired.
Ernie, throw something out here.
The applicant's here for a use variance, because the use he's proposing is not permitted. Based upon the ownership of the lots, it appears he may also require variants for more than one principal use on a lot. In going through the use variants, Mr. Borden gave planning testimony, he hit the requirements for use variance testimony, we'll comment on those, we don't take any exception to them, the board gets to weigh the evidence and decide if they think he's carried the day on those issues. But what does the applicant come in for? Claims he's gonna have a club, 25 to 50 members, it'll be open to the public, that it's, in some sense, a business, and they've offered testimony with regards to noise, which is pretty much the concern of the residents in the adjacent area. They've offered, to some extent, what we might refer to as performance standards. They went to certain places, measured sound levels, they've indicated how they've tried to ameliorate the concern of noise by moving things around and trying to keep it as far away, or try to limit the noise that can be heard at the property boundaries or at the neighbors' houses. So, the board, you know, that's what you guys get paid the big bucks for, is to weigh that evidence and decide if they've carried the day on that issue. But please understand that when reconciling the testimony, reasonable conditions could include some sorts of performance standards, and they've given some of those to you. They've talked about where they've placed the track itself, or the, the use itself. They've talked about what they believe are the noise levels that are generated by the proposed use. You can offer up other requirements. Perhaps they do need a site plan for the entrance room, perhaps they do need a site plan for the parking area. If you visited the site and you said, "Well, you know what, if it was my backyard and I had 15 folks show up with trailers to carry ATVs or something else," there, there probably is enough land back there to accomplish that, it simply isn't in an organized form that you would see like if you were building a shopping center. So, again, to the extent the board feels, if they feel positive with regards to use variants, the site plan could be something that you discuss subsequently, or say, "We're just gonna hear the use variants, make them come back for a site plan." You think there's enough information and you want to approve the use variants, in theory, we could, we could approve a waiver of the site plan. But in order to protect not only the town, but the adjacent residents, I'd like to think in terms of performance standards. What have they done, what could they do? They've limited ages, they've limited the size of the vehicles, actually, I don't know if they've limited them, they've indicated what the sizes are, and they've offered testimony saying that they can try to make the noise less worse, is my professional comment for the evening, less worse, by putting some form of muffler on the, on the vehicles. What I don't think I heard tonight, and I guess, I, I just asked Mr. Alfieri to confirm, at some point I thought we heard some testimony regarding an extinguishment clause on the application, meaning if Mr. Janusa himself doesn't own the house or the land, that the use goes away.
We, we did discuss that, but it's, it, it, we could agree to it, but if someone challenges it, it's not enforceable in court, so.
Again, a performance standard that the board may consider in terms of the testimony you heard, this particular individual's gonna take care of this place, so again, I, I would suggest to the board that when you weigh all of the evidence that's been given, do consideration be given to what we refer to as performance standards. What have they offered to ameliorate the concerns, and what might the board consider as reasonable accommodations, should they vote in the affirmative on the application? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alfieri, actually, you're talking back and forth.
We, you know, we would love for the board to vote tonight, but again, you're all volunteers, and we defer to the board, it's your call, but you know, we've, we're tired, we're as tired as you are, but we wanna move on with our lives. But again, it's entirely up to the board, if you think you need time to vote, you'll, you'll tell us that.
Let me discuss this with the board members, okay? James had made his issues, each one, in this regard, before we.
All right, so, so the question before the board, I was.
All right, so, so the question before the board, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, is whether or not, so it's all closed, you'd be carrying deliberation for two weeks to give your, give yourselves an opportunity to review your notes, minutes, whatever transcripts are available, and then you would be coming back for, simply for deliberation, no more testimony, testimonies closed, and you would render the determination then? Obviously, maybe not obviously, but the alternative is that, that you are in fact ready to deliberate and make a determination this evening. You heard the expression of one board member, so I would ask, because it's counterintuitive, don't spend too much time on deliberating whether or not you want to deliberate or
Ernie, are we talking about a C here? Ernie?
I'm sorry?
Are we, you listening to James?
Yes. As regards to the site access.
I believe the design standards in the ordinance that cover access aisles and/or parking are in the design section of the code, so I believe they are design waivers and may not be C variances. I would also note that, that generally is something that we would handle at site plan. We would say that if the use were in the affirmative, we'd ask them perhaps to return or as a condition of the use variance, to provide twenty-four foot wide, similar to what's in the ordinance. But I, I'm not sure, I would think that it's a design standard waiver and not a C variance. If the board chooses to deliberate at another meeting, Evan and I will scour the ordinance with regards to that and have a fully one-hundred percent committed answer for you at the next meeting. But we've been doing this a long time, I, I think the width of the aisle is a, is a design waiver, not a variance.
All right, so with that all, respectfully, with that spread upon the record, I don't think the board, and I don't mean this, this comes across disrespectfully, I don't mean it that way. But with that, with those conclusions, or not conclusions, with those concerns spread upon the record and coupled with the hour, I think the board has a choice but to give itself the opportunity to have those specific questions addressed during deliberation. So, you know, I, I think that, that should be the determination, which would mean deliberation would be, well, I, I guess you have the right though to not take my advice, recommendation, you're right, I'm sorry.
No, I'm of the mind, I think I, I've heard enough testimony, I've, I've included my deliberation.
Yeah, but, but Mike, but you have a board member, I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna push that.
I understand, I understand.
We have a board member, it's more than a sentiment, because he's articulated a basis for concern over the ability to deliberate. And it, it, it has been spread upon the record to a point where I think it moves the board at this point, where the two weeks to clean that issue up, as much as you believe individually you have enough information.
To that point, then, our professionals will, will present a brief on that?
We'll have those two-
Who are we relying upon, other than ourselves to deliberate this issue? Or are we relying upon our professionals?
Well, I think the point ra- raised is that, yeah, and as to the determination on the variance, that falls, falls to me.
So then two weeks, we'll get a, well, prior to the two-week meeting, we'll get a briefing from, from counsel and professionals on the situation.
We will circulate our opinions on those two questions and copies to the, to folks, and you'll then have the opportunity to deliberate.
And in deliberation, there's no more input from the objector and/or applicant?
Correct. Testimony is closed.
Correct, okay. I'll wait to hear from other board members. Anybody else care to speak on this?
So Sean, on the variance issue that you're always raising, that's not something that you can opine on right now definitively?
Well, while, so, while I feel like can, I think I'm better, I, I think I'm, having just gone to a, I'm sorry, I can't help myself, having just gone to seminars today, and you're always better off having a, if you have the opportunity to write down your thoughts and look at them and, and, and cite them, the board is better served. So given the totality of the circumstances, I can't be, I'm very rarely this strong about stuff, I think I've been here long enough, you all can accept that. I, it is my sincerest and most direct observation and suggestion that at this point you carry the application for two weeks. I can't be any more requestful of that.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I will move to the camera.
Carrie?
How about you?
I'm sorry, what's the point?
So how's two weeks for you?
Not good. Well, the question is, if, are we gonna make arguments on these points, or you're just gonna have it in writing and make a decision? Because if, if you want an argument, I can't be here on December, if it's December first, I already have two other towns, I don't know how I'm gonna get through, so. But if you want written opinions and then you'll make your decision-
Well, the board's gonna deliberate, right? So, and, and the board has asked for our opinions in writing, which will come to you. You know, the, can't help, I'm stuck a little bit myself. So I mean, if you wanted just to be safe, to cover yourself, what, ask for the fifteenth, it's the applicant's.
I mean, if, I mean, I could try and send someone here on the first if you want, it's, it's not, it's, I'm out every night, so it doesn't matter, just point me to the down, that's where I'm going, I don't care. Sorry?
Pardon me? I cannot be here on the first.
No, there's no testimony.
No testimony.
No testimony.
No testimony, just so you know. It's just a deliberation after the professionals respond to the question.
All right, so do the first.
You know, I, maybe I'm missing something, but what is it you intend to do on the first? Make a decision.
All right, so with that, with that, this app, application, facility, application-
Excuse me, are we gonna see the comments from your professionals?
Yes.
Before the first?
Yes. Application number three, use variance three, use variance three, three, five, five, will be carried for deliberation only to December first, two thousand twenty-one meeting, without the requirement of further notice. Applicant has waived time till December, December sixteenth.
Yes, that's fine. Thank you, thank you again, everyone.
You can have another cut.
How's that?
Oh, yeah, it's arrest, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, that's the most important thing on my mind. What are you on, gun?